Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge relates to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women stationed around the world. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Number five, comments from the public during the public comment period and pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.84, parent two. Individuals must state their name and address. Comments are limited to items not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named. The board's role is to listen and receive information from the public, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Any items that are not on tonight's agenda? We'll move on. Number six, written communications or announcements. Does anybody, before we start the sanitary rate review, does anybody have any announcements? Anybody on the board? No? I would just like to make an announcement to the public, and I'm doing this a month ahead of time. In the month of November, we will have a trash pickup change, and I just want everybody aware of it. That's why I'm saying it at this meeting. So for the month of November, the trash pickup for the week of Thanksgiving, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, is the same as always. Thursday's pickup will be on Wednesday, and Friday's pickup will be the following Monday after Thanksgiving. So just so everybody knows that, I'm probably going to say it at every meeting I'm at between now and Thanksgiving, so we get it out into the public.
There are the time of the Halloween.
Halloween is four to seven on Friday. Okay, so now we have the presentation from New Water on the sanitary rate increase. Brian Rickert. Nathan's coming up front, and he gets to deliver the presentation. Thank you, Nathan. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. Nathan Qualls, 2231 North Quincy Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. That's New Water's office address. And I have Beth Clausen, our Director of Business Services, attending with me. Appreciate the opportunity to present to the board a New Water update here. Going to go ahead and flip to the next slide. Our agenda will walk through our recent facility plan and some updates on some capital projects that are underway, and then move on to the 2026 draft budget.
Okay. Thank you.
So back in 2021, we completed a facility plan, a comprehensive look at our Green Bay facility and DePere facility wastewater treatment systems. And the main conclusions at the time is we needed to invest $310 to $480 million over the next 20 years in infrastructure improvements at both the plants and the interceptor systems. At that time, the projected year-to-year rate increases for the next 10 years was to be managed 5.5% to 7% year-over-year. Those capital costs presented in $2021, just for reference, you can go ahead. Okay, we've got the capital project updates there. So we have several of those projects that were identified in that facility plan now underway. You can see we've got five shown there, and their capital estimates. Some of those at both treatment facilities and some out in our interceptor system that conveys the wastewater to those plants. And then we have two more projects with the design already underway. So moving very quickly into the implementation of that facility plan that we finished a couple of years ago. Okay, next slide. Wanted to provide an update on this downtown interceptor and East River interceptor renewal project. So two separate contracts, but they're tied together in both their function and location. So this interceptor system, and you can see the picture in the lower right, some of the largest and deepest sewers in our community. The one shown in the lower right was constructed in the 1930s. And you can see, does have some structural challenges and in need of some rehabilitation. So this project is now underway. The two projects combined are about $29 million, and we expect to finish that project in next year, July. And so the picture on the upper right shows some large black pipes. Those are shown kind of trenched underground. But if you've traveled through the city of Green Bay recently, you might have seen some of these black pipes. These are temporary bypass pipes. So while we're working on these very deep sewers, we have to pump the wastewater through these pipes to a downstream manhole so that we can rehabilitate those. Not unlike a number of projects that I'm sure you do in your community when you rehabilitate your sewer. So the difference here, these are just from the '30s, very, very deep, very large sewers. Significant portion of our interceptor system is conveyed through those sewers. You can go to the next slide, please. And the project's located along the East River, as well as along the east side of the Fox River in downtown Green Bay. And you see the note there, about 20% of your community's wastewater flows through these interceptor systems. So definitely a critical project for your community. So the cost of wastewater services, while ours are continuing to increase, is not just a Wisconsin problem. It's not just a New Water challenge. This is a national challenge. This index that we showed here is a nationwide average put together by an association called NACWA. And they're projecting those increases to the annual sewer service charge for a typical household, continuing to climb. And the line that cuts across those columns is inflation. And you can see that CPI is not a good index of the cost of wastewater services. Those year-to-year increases continue to outpace inflation, not just here at New Water, but also nationally. So shifting gears, going into our proposed 2026 budget, you can see we have an O and M budget increase of about 3.4%. And in contrast to our debt service and annual capital increase of about 18%. So we're starting to see this facility plan and the work in our interceptor system really start to drive some of the cost changes in the form of capital construction projects. You can go to the next slide, please. And so the net impact on that for municipal user fees is about 6.6% over 2025. And you can see the bottom line, the contribution from capital reserve of about $2 million. And so we've committed to managing those increases in that 5.5% to 7%. And in order to do that, at this version of the budget, we were looking at a reserve use of about $2 million from our plant capital reserve to help manage those rate impacts. Go to the next slide. So in summary, an overall 10.2% increase in our total expenses, capital expenses being the major driver there at 18%, O and M 3.4. And those municipal user fees increase about 6.6%. Next slide. So the utilization of reserves is something that we regularly do. It is beginning to ramp up. So you can see the past few years of utilization of reserves. This is a combination of both our interceptor cost recovery reserve, as well as our plant capital reserve. So that's why that number is 2 million on the previous slide and 3 million on this slide. So it is something we've committed to continue to do on behalf of our customers, is to utilize those reserves to help manage rate increases. Next slide. So while our overall general municipal user fees are increasing 6.6%, an individual municipality can have a different experience, depending whether maybe they're a growing community, so the amount of wastewater in either contaminant load or flows is increasing, so they may get a larger share. And their individual municipalities' increase may be slightly more than that 6.6% or slightly less if they've reduced flows, or another industry, for example, might be driving their share up. So there's a number of those factors that can, in fact, impact an individual municipality's overall cost to New Water. Go to the next slide. So we've been working really hard on trying to maintain this long-range view in our financial planning. And so these vertical columns here are representing the ongoing debt service and annual capital that we're foreseeing as we execute on these projects. The dark blue bar at the base of that is our existing debt service. And you can see that's holding relatively slightly dropping off until we get out to, I believe it's 2035, is our next significant drop of our existing debt service. And so really just continued ongoing investment in our infrastructure is what is driving those increases, with a lot of uncertainty out past kind of the 2030, 2031 timeframe. Next slide. So this strategic financial plan has identified, and we're going to continue to work on this, but the importance of the utilization of our reserves in order to help maintain those municipal user fee increases of 5.5% to 7%. The red line going across this chart is the municipal user fees, if we did not leverage that and use that plant capital reserve. And you can see year-to-year increases that top out at some point at about 18% year-to-year. And we are showing the green line, managing that 5.5% to 7% municipal user fees, and that's demonstrating the utilization of those reserves. We have enough reserves to do that, and we're going to keep a close eye as we continue to execute on these projects. And so here's sort of our record to date on trying to manage those 5.5% to 7%. You can see we've been either under or on the low side of that here as we head into 2026 with this new surge of capital. We're near the higher part of that range at 6.6%. Go to the next slide. So we have a $300 to $500 million capital budget, percentage 6.6% increase in user fees. What does this mean for a typical household? So for New Water Services, which does not include the cost that Ashwabhanan may have to add on for their sewer projects and maintenance, O and M on their sanitary sewer, for the typical household, 2026 budget will be about $28 per month for a typical household. That's a $1.71 increase over the 2025 budget. And that's the final slide, and happy to answer any questions about New Water, the projects, the budget, et cetera.
I'm sure you've looked into this, but is there any federal or state funding available right now for this type of project? Or have you got some already?
We leverage the state revolving fund, so that gives us availability to low-interest loans or subsidized loans. So we aren't eligible for principal forgiveness or a grant, but we do get a low-interest loan. So that's one of the strategies to help with that. It reduces the interest on these construction loans. But there's some other areas of our operation that we are pretty active in trying to secure grants for, especially our watershed work, where there's a fair amount of grant availability. But the construction projects tend to just try to do as much low-interest loan as possible.
Thank you. So I have a question. So it says on the last page, for the draft 2026 budget, a typical household will pay about $28 per month. So that's a $1.71 increase. So when you get your three-month bill, that'd be like $5 or so?
Yeah.
And this is-
Approximately $5 over a quarter or whatever.
Okay. And this is strictly on the water side?
This is New Water wastewater services only. So New Water is the regional sewage district. We handle the wastewater flow from 15 communities, Ashwabhanan being one of those. And so this is the wastewater side. It would not include the sanitary sewer costs that Ashwabhanan needs to charge the homeowners as well.
Okay.
This would be for the large interceptor pipes that convey that wastewater from the village, from the city, et cetera, to the wastewater treatment facility, and then treat that wastewater.
So looking from the perspective of the resident, you know, $5 or whatever for quarter for the sewer part of it, what's the increase that's coming for the water part of it?
So that's not within New Water's jurisdiction. That would either be Central Brown County Water, authorities, Green Bay Water.
Gotcha. So our water is provided by Green Bay Water.
Yep.
Which is essentially the city of Green Bay. Currently, they are not proposing any changes.
Any increase? Okay.
Correct.
Good.
However, we'll talk about it when we get to the budget item. Likely, we still should be taking advantage of a simplified rate case increase.
Yep.
And I can get into the details of that.
We already had started that discussion, I know.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Sorry. I apologize. I should have started with some background on New Water being on the wastewater side. It is quite confusing with the naming. My apologies.
Yeah. New Water is just our sanitary side of things. So Green Bay Metro Sanitary District, also known as.
Also known as New Water.
You know, being in the water business, either clean or dirty, we'll keep it. Do you have any means of raising revenue yourself, not to throw it onto all these people and our people in the community?
You know, we're a nonprofit regional wastewater services, so our costs of our service need to come primarily from the communities that we serve, our 15 municipal customers. We do look for other forms of revenue. We do bring a lot of hauled waste into our facility from, some of them are industries and businesses, some of them are from outlying areas that may not be connected to sewers. So if a homeowner has a holding tank or a septic tank, that gets hauled to our facility. So we get some revenue from that standpoint. But it tends to be about 83%, 85% of our revenue comes from the 15 municipal customers.
So the only revenue you're getting is the private concerns dumping into your system? Is that what you're saying?
From residential, commercial, and industries that are utilizing our services, right? They pay a proportional amount of our user fees based on how much wastewater they discharge to us.
And all our utilities are growing rapidly versus, I think we're paying more attention to it now, when they go up with these kind of numbers you're throwing at us. People get a bill, they pay the bill. They don't understand it like you're presenting it now. And these rates are continually climbing faster than what the economy's going almost.
Yeah, yeah. It is, as that one slide demonstrated. The annual cost of services for wastewater services is outpacing inflation, the normal, you know, cost. It's a different basket of goods, right? It is. Our costs aren't proportional to the price of eggs or the cost of insurance or the price of gas. It's proportional to labor, concrete for projects, chemicals for wastewater treatment, you know, power and those kinds of things. And that's, and especially this investment in aging infrastructure, right? Much of our facilities, some of those sewers, constructed in the '30s. Much of our, both wastewater treatment plants constructed in the 1970s are in need of reinvestment. And so we can't defer that maintenance. We need to continue to invest in that infrastructure.
You had mentioned before, just piggyback on Tracy, asked about grants, and you said you weren't eligible for grants. Why is that? What do you have to do to be eligible?
Yeah, so there's a formula that establishes the level of principal forgiveness that we can get through the state revolving fund. And in large part, the reason is our median household income, you know, for our entire service area is just too high. So if we had a lower median household income, you know, relative to others in the state, then we could potentially get principal forgiveness. But that's just not the case for New Water's 15 municipalities. So there's a calculation they run through. It says we don't get enough points to get principal forgiveness. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Appreciate the question.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thanks so much.
Okay. Under public hearings, number seven, we have nothing. Number eight, action on the consent agenda. Consider, discuss, act on open and closed session minutes from September 23rd, 2025. B, receive and accept the general fund financial reports as of 10/23/2025. C, receive and accept the September 2025 investment report. D, receive and accept the October 2025 park rec and forestry department reports. E, receive and accept the October 2025 Public Works Department report. F, consider, discuss, act on employee benefits insurance broker services agreement renewal. G, consider, discuss, act on 2026 commercial liability insurance program. H, consider, discuss, act on a commercial building plan review contract renewal with ePlan exam. And I, consider, discuss, act on the budgeted expenditures for periods between 9/18/2025 to 10/23/2025. If nobody wants anything taken out, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion.
There's no further.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
And I'll second it.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Number nine, ordinances and resolutions. 9A, consider, discuss, act on ordinance 010-1-25 amending section 2-1-46, regular meetings of the Village of Ashwabhanan Municipal Code. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. As the title indicates, this proposed ordinance amends section 2-1-46 of the Ashwabhanan Municipal Code. This ordinance is being presented at the direction of the village board from their September 23rd, 2025 meeting, where the board had requested an ordinance be drafted to amend the regular meeting start times for village board from 6:00 PM to 5:30 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. If the board is in agreement with this, a simple motion to adopt the ordinance is required. If you'd like to implement a start date of when that would begin, that could be a part of that motion. So if beginning January 1, 2026, just make that as part of your motion. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Well, I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 010-1-25, amending section 2-1-46, making the regular meetings at 5:30, starting January 1 of 2026.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 010-1-25, starting January 1, 2026. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
A question, is that going to be publicized so the public can see that before the change does come?
Yep. Yeah, Sarah will be right on that with our social media and-
And as with every public meeting, it's properly noticed as part of the agenda and public notice requirements, and it'll be updated within our public calendars, whether it be online or printed calendars.
Okay, very good.
Okay, 9B, consider, discuss, act on ordinance 010-2-25, amending section 15-2-47, parent G, parks and recreation, park traffic flow regulations, parking regulations of the Village of Ashwabhanan Municipal Code. Joel.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Due to some recent concerns regarding individuals either illegally camping or taking habitation in some village parks, staff had prepared an ordinance to be presented to both the park board and village board that would ultimately prohibit parking of RVs, campers, camping trailers, and the like within our village parks. It should note that the draft ordinance that's included in your packet does not affect camping areas that are specifically designed or designated for camping, such as approved campgrounds that the park board has established, or from individuals providing guard or protection services within village park property. Ordinance 10-2-25 is a piggyback ordinance to an ordinance that you will take up next on your agenda, which is 10-3-25. This particular ordinance specifically regulates parking or prohibits parking of RVs, campers, camping trailers in village parks regardless of time of day. This item was presented to park board, and it is recommended for denial by the park board. The park board is requesting that denial because of a variety of different unintended consequences as a result of that, of this ordinance, primarily because the impact on transient travelers coming into our parks. As an example, if somebody gets off the highway, decides to have a picnic lunch at a park, and they happen to be driving an RV, this ordinance would effectively prohibit them from doing so. And in addition to that, if Grandma or Grandpa is in town to watch their grandchild participate in a tournament or sporting event at one of our parks, and they're driving up from somewhere out of town, and again, they bring their RV or camping trailer, again, it would prohibit that. So there would be a number of unintended consequences as a result of the prohibition on parking. Therefore, the park board recommended denial for that. However, they did ask that staff just conduct further research and figure out if there are other ways to mitigate some of the concerns as related to loitering and things of that nature for individuals using the parks and happen to be habitating in them, using RVs or camping trailers within the park system. So if the board is in agreement with that, a motion to deny the adoption of ordinance 10-2-25 would be in order. However, if the board, village board disagrees with the recommendation from the park board and wishes to adopt the ordinance, then a motion to adopt the ordinance would certainly be in order, or if the board wishes to amend any provisions within the ordinance. With that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Chris, I'm assuming you had a long discussion on this?
We did, on the park board. And I think we were pretty much generally in agreement that we didn't want this to go forward, because it does kind of, brings up questions about potential of negative impacts of people just wanting to use, that are coming into the area, just want to use our parks just for what they're intended for. And not just people from out of the area, but our local citizens. And it wasn't, it's okay if there's nothing, we want to give our officers a little bit of teeth if there's potential an issue of an issue, to be able to approach an individual or a party and just kind of take care of a situation that might arise. Right now, they don't have that.
Yeah. And, you know, and I can absolutely see, because I'll use Ashwabhanan for an example. There's a lot of tournaments that happen out there. I know that there are teams that come out there, and somebody will bring an RV in, and for the day, they're using that RV as kind of like they're serving lunches, this kind of stuff. So, yeah, this probably does need to be revamped, relooked at as to how that would flow.
You know, to piggyback on Chris from park board, the other things we talked about was the current ordinances that we do have in regard to the park board, or the park ordinances. Right now, you can't be in the park between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So if the overnight thing is an issue, it can be handled that way. Also, our parks director is the only one that can approve tents in the park. So that could cover that end of it as well. And there was one more that was, we thought was good. But, yeah, there was a lot of discussion at park board. We do not want to limit use of the park by people doing what they want to do in the parks by putting this ordinance in place. And asked staff if they could look into it a little bit further and- Um, and ask staff if they could look into it a little bit further and see if there's any other way we could handle the concerns that seem to be coming up.
And there's options, we talked about maybe presenting to, to staff, you know, is it possible to, you know, kind of do a reversal of what we do with our short-term rental, um, saying that we'll limit how many days that, you know, you can consecutive, that you can be in the park on a daily basis, or maybe where you can't, certain spots you can park in. It was, it was just, there were some certain incidences where, uh, some residents were feeling intimidated by, um, things that were going on, and didn't want to bring their kids, grandkids, uh, pets use our parks. And we just wanted to be able to give our officers, um, just a little bit of teeth to be able to just oversee things. And it's not to keep people out of our parks and.
I guess since Tom's here, our chief, if there's any concerns you have, and with our discussion, anything to add to it as far as public safety end of it?
I, I think you're kind of all hitting on the head. Um, it's the complaints that we get, uh, because there's an RV or two R Vs, or someone can't get into a park. And if you have to look at some of our parks of where they're at, not a very big parking lot, number one. And if they're there all day, how do other people then either get into those lots or come to those lots? And then with that, there's a concern, there's a safety concern as well as, is there trash being picked up, and how are they using that park? So that's the complaints that we're getting from our residents that they're asking us to check on, and check on them daily. And, um, while we don't mind patrolling, it's, there's certain other things that we could be doing as well.
Well, based on this discussion, I think, uh, there needs to be more work done in this area, so I'll make the motion to deny the adoption of ordinance, uh, oh one zero dash two dash twenty-five, amending section fifteen dash two dash forty-seven G, parks and recreation, uh, park traffic flow regulations, parking regulations of the village of Ashwabhanan municipal code.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the adoption of ordinance oh one zero dash two dash twenty-five. Um, do we need to add, um, to have staff bring this back and continue to work on it to see where we could?
Uh, you, you can certainly, I mean, that was part of the action from park board, but there was no emphasis on time.
Right.
As it related from the park board, they just said, take some time, think about ways that you can, um, address issues as they come up from complaints from constituents or residents that are using the parks. And if something else could be presented, uh, if that, if that becomes available, then, then certainly present that, and then we'll work through the normal process of adoption at that point.
Okay.
And I agree, you know, we, we did mention that there's not a, you know, we're not in a hurry to do this. Um, and I'll say this to that, you know, and maybe there's nothing we want to do. I just want to bring it out there to, to say, hey, do we have an issue? Do we not have an issue? Is there something we can do without, um, affecting the people that want to use our, our parks? And, and maybe, you know, maybe it's not an issue, and maybe there's, there's okay doing nothing. So, but I just want to explore all possibilities.
Joel, did you, uh, is there any reference from other communities that are going through the same thing that you're aware of?
Um, well, I don't know if it's necessarily related to this specific ordinance. Obviously, this may, that question may be more relatable to the, to the next ordinance as it relates to the prohibition of camping in, in other public spaces. This one was, we, we were really trying to kind of piggyback that ordinance and identify that we had some concerns with individuals, not necessarily camping overnight in an RV, but more or less camping during the day in an RV and, and taking up, um, certain areas of parks because of that. And, um, this was in an effort to, to try to address that as best as we could, but clearly there's, there's unintended consequences and some outcomes that would come of that that I, I think would defeat the intent of what we were trying to accomplish.
You know, the population of the many campers that have everything in there but the ki- it does have a kitchen sink even. You know, it's more popular that people are using those for transportation. And what, uh, uh, Steve said, uh, that they, they use these more, they, they, like the cornerstone is a popular place. And those are where we're kind of talking about is those type of people that use them just for transportation, going to sporting events, whatever else. Uh, I think the popularity of that is, is becoming more and more known about, and those are the people that we're trying to hit, I think, that, uh, are abusing it if, if they are abusing it. You know, we only get that through complaints.
We have a motion to deny. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nine C, consider, discuss, act on ordinance oh one zero dash three dash two five, creating chapter eleven nuisances and environment, article five, camping prohibited on village property. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, due to recent reported concerns related to individuals illegally camping or taking habitation in various public areas, including some village parks, uh, the following ordinance is being proposed that would establish regulations that would prohibit camping lodging or otherwise taking habitation on, on all village-owned public spaces or property. Uh, the ordinance applies to all village property, not just village parks. So as was noted earlier, we currently have a prohibition on camping in village parks, unless it's within a designated area. This would extend that prohibition to other areas such as rights-of-way, uh, streets, sidewalks, parking lots, easements, uh, conservancy areas, and the like, or other leased or managed properties owned by the village. Uh, ultimately, this also further defines what camping or taking habitation is. Uh, as noted, it would be unlawful under ordinance to camp or take habitation on village property. How we would define that is that evidence of habitation could include a tent, a temporary shelter, tarps, umbrellas, bedding, cooking utensils, and the like, and other personal belongings. Um, ultimately, the clo- the code would allow the village to remove individuals in any camping or habitation materials from that village property. Um, and again, as noted in the prior conversation, uh, any areas that are designated as camping areas and are subjected to the rules established by the park board would be exempt from this. Um, as with any code, uh, within our, within our municipal code, or any ordinance within our municipal code, all violations are subject to penalties under the general section unless otherwise identified. So we did not identify in the draft ordinance separate penalties that would be excluded from section one one thirteen, so it would just fall under the general penalty section of our municipal code. Uh, obviously, this particular proposal has brought, uh, forward some, some concerns from the general public, which we've met with various providers over the last few weeks as this, this proposed ordinance has, uh, been presented. I'll, I'll touch on a few things about some of the advantages or why this ordinance is being proposed, and then summarize some of the conversations that we've heard from constituents, residents, service providers, and the like. And I do understand that there are likely people in the room that wish to speak or be addressed on this particular topic. Uh, so why is this ordinance being proposed? It's, it's really to ensure the safe and accessible use of these public spaces for the broader community. Uh, ultimately, camping in public areas can lead to unsanitary conditions, especially where no restrooms, trash disposal, or clean water is available to those areas. That not only creates risks for those camping, but it can also create imposed risks for the general public. It can create safety concerns, especially in specific areas. Streets, sidewalks are not necessarily designed for habitation. They can create unsafe conditions for pedestrians, for motorists. Uh, we have found situations where individuals are encamped in areas close to railroad tracks that, that poses a significant risk to those individuals that are in those areas. Um, and people encamping in those areas have increased risk from traffic, from crime, and certainly other environmental conditions. Uh, these areas are generally set up to be designed to be accessed and maintained by emergency personnel, so having these types of encampments can create problems for emergency access from public safety, our public works crews, and other maintenance issues as it relates to that. Uh, and then generally speaking, these areas were set up and designed specifically for an accessible public use. Streets are meant for motorists, sidewalks are meant for pedestrians, parks are meant for recreation and leisure, and so when these encampments become formed, they tend to limit access for other users from the intended purpose. Uh, we've also heard from other, uh, communities that have had these issues is that it does impact the environment and infrastructure in those areas. In particular, the city of La Crosse has found that, um, some significant landscaped areas within their city parks have been damaged, and, and as a result, they've had to clo- physically close parks due to the encampments, not only to those camping, but to the general public. And so, um, there's been some damage to various infrastructure and other natural areas as a result of that. Uh, and then ultimately, it, it really kind of forces us, and I know there's a counter argument to this, to this topic, but we're really focused more on encouraging a connection to services than we are about looking to criminalize or punish the individuals within that, within that, uh, violating aspect. So, again, we're trying to really kind of take a proactive approach to addressing this issue, and the issue really is about losing, uh, access to these public spaces for their intended use and maintaining the safety and health, uh, of the users of those facilities, whether it, again, is the individuals that are found camping, or the individuals that are using those areas for their intended use. So what are some of the concerns that we've heard? And again, I'm summarizing this, and I'm sure the various service providers and interested constituents will be able to speak more specifically to their concerns. Uh, but ultimately, what we've heard is that there's a lack of shelter options. And so the, many times, these individuals, they're, they're basically surviving, right? They're looking for a place to safely find a place to put their head down at night so that they can make it to the next day. And because we do not have, uh, adequate shelter options for these individuals, oftentimes these public spaces become that location. Uh, and as a result of that, uh, if we do not allow them to take those spaces, they will likely scatter and look for other spaces where they can, they can find that accommodation. Um, it, it becomes a concern about human rights and dignity, so if we're prohibiting camping, um, what we've heard is that the, the village may be looking to criminalize survival. And again, that's not the intent of what we're, what we're doing, uh, but that's what, how it's being viewed by some of the service providers because there is, ultimately, when you adopt a, a law or a code, there is a penalty section within that. Um, there's some concerns about, uh, safety and autonomy for individuals. So what we've heard is that some individuals may avoid sheltering circumstances or situations because they feel themselves unsafe in a sheltered environment. Maybe there's been past theft, maybe there's strict rules for entry into those shelters, maybe because of their entry, they would have to be separated from partners, pets, or they've had some other type of trauma. And that camping in a chosen location can ensure that they have kind of a sense of control, whereas if they go into those sheltered environments, they may lose that sense. Ultimately, enforcement of the camping bans can displace people. Again, if we, we tell them that they can't be in these locations, they're going to go somewhere else to find that location. And because of that, um, it, it furthers and limits the opportunity for outreach then. Uh, we've heard from a number of service providers that if we disperse these individuals because they're not allowed to, to camp in these public spaces, it will be harder for them to reach them and to provide the services that are necessary for them to get the treatment, services, or shelter that they do in fact need. Uh, again, I just want to kind of reiterate, the, the purpose of the ordinance is to ensure that our public spaces are safe and accessible to all users, uh, regardless of the type of user that are there. The intent is not to punish or criminalize individuals that are seek, uh, seeing homelessness or an unsheltered environment. Our goal is to, from this, obviously, connect those individuals to resources. We recognize that that's not necessarily required, an ordinance doesn't require that connection. But again, our purpose is to ensure that these environments are safe and accessible to the general use. Uh, so with that, I'll certainly answer any questions, uh, on the proposed ordinance. I will say that this was presented to the Public Works and Protection Committee at the beginning of the month, uh, in October, and they did recommend approval of the ordinance as it's being presented to you tonight.
I guess my, um, my first question would be, is, uh, the chief, uh, Roland, about the, when your officers get to in this situation where somebody is doing an encampment or sleeping, kind of what's, what's your process and procedure that you follow to get them to the services that they actually need?
Sure. So first and foremost, um, any of our officers is going to treat anyone with dignity and respect, um, because you never know what situation someone is in or has been put in and why they're there. So, um, I, I think Joel had said this perfect, that we're not there, we'll use discretion. We're not there to arrest somebody, to cite somebody, but there, what can we do to help? What do they need? And can we provide that? Um, if we're able to provide that or to get them some help or support, that's what our officers will do. But again, we, as a department, are also very limited, so a lot of times, you know, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, we talk to these individuals and then trying to find them some support or assistance, uh, it's also very difficult. And a lot of times, they're, they just want to be left alone. And it's hard when it's raining out or it's cold out, and, and we want to provide for them as well. So, um, we try to use a lot of discretion and the best we can to, to help them out.
Chief, a question, just the opposite of what you're talking about. You people are the first responders to whatever situation you run into on the subject that we're talking about. I know there's a lot of discussion that hopefully we can calm down a little bit. What I'm asking you is, do these people that have the answer, or think they have the answer of how to handle these people, do they come to you and teach you about what is available to take care of these situations? Because you're only as good as what you run into. Does somebody come and help you be educated to, where do we do with them? Where do we go with them?
Sure.
Who do we see?
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot, there are services out there, um, that we either try to get or have been given to us, or, um, people will certainly tell us about. Um, we certainly do try to educate ourselves, uh, certainly as the best we can. Um, this isn't something that we deal with, of course, every day. Um, so when we do run into it, we certainly are reaching out to these certain services, and sometimes they're helpful, and sometimes they, they direct us, uh, someplace else to go, or someplace else to look at for, for people like this. But, um, yeah, there's, there's not a class on this. It's, this is life, and this is real life for a lot of people, and when we do deal with this, um, we certainly do the best we can to help somebody, to get out of that situation, and to, uh, help them, help them move on.
Gary, to, to piggyback that, there's, um, and there are members here that are service providers within the coalition, but there's a Brown County Housing and Homeless Coalition, and there's a, just a, a series of providers and service, services that are, are, are a part of that coalition. And there's, there's a laundry list of those providers and information that we have available. Um, I, I know that we occasionally have officers participate. I occasionally participate in, uh, a housing outreach team meeting, and then the coalition meetings, just, just to stay aware, stay abreast of what's happening, not only in Ashwabhanan, but throughout Brown County. It, it is not an Ashwabhanan-specific issue. It is, it is a truly a regional issue. Um, and so we just try to stay in tune with what service providers are out there, where their limitations are, and then we have a, a list of those service providers that we can provide to our officers, so that if, hey, we, we encountered, let's say, a family encamped in this area in the village, where can we send them? All right, well, let's go through that service provider list, let's do some outreach ourselves to those service providers and see if they have any capacity, and then try to connect with that individual that, or that, that, that family, if you will, that is experiencing, uh, what they're experiencing, and hopefully make that connection.
Can I ask what the impetus was for pursuing this ordinance? Do we have some concerns, calls, one, ten, thousands? What was, why was this put forth?
So this ordinance was put forth, predominantly, we were receiving a series of calls intermittently, um, over the past few weeks, if not few months. Uh, we've had a couple trustees reach out to us as well and indicate, hey, we, we're hearing things from our constituents, we're concerned about these individuals maybe setting up encampments, what can we do? And that's really what it was really kind of born from, is just that feedback from constituents. Um, do I have a hard number? Were we taking a log? No. But I would, I would suggest that from at least my office, and I certainly can't speak to every department, because public safety obviously takes individual calls as well, there was a series of at least- a series of at least a half a dozen to a dozen calls within the last probably, I'd say, month and a half to two months. And then a couple to three calls from trustees indicating that they've had, received these concerns as well from constituents.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about this ordinance?
Is this another case, like the previous item, where we're just trying to give our public safety just something to act on? You know, because we don't, obviously, it's been said a couple times that we don't want to ticket people, arrest them, or anything like that. So is this just a case, again, where we just want to give our officers an ability to be able to act on something in case there is a situation that they need to?
Again, I'll reiterate the point, but I'll give a couple of examples. Obviously, the purpose of the ordinance would be to ensure these facilities stay safe. So if we allow encampments to continue to develop, expand, or become larger, we have identified issues in other municipalities where that continues to grow and become a larger issue. And so by having the ordinance in effect, we can limit the growth, if you will, of that within these public spaces. This ordinance is not going to solve homelessness. Allowing individuals to camp in public spaces is not going to solve homelessness. So that this ordinance is not intended to address that issue. It's really to address the fact that we're trying to maintain these spaces as safe and accessible for public use. So what it does do is it gives us the authority to say, you can't be here for that purpose. As an example, we had instances where an individual was sleeping within a tube slide in one of the parks. And a kid comes and climbs up the slide and slides down and hits somebody sleeping in the tube slide. Who has a right to that space? Is it the child that's there playing on the playground, or is it the individual sleeping in the tube slide? We've had instances where individuals may be sleeping or encamping in a park shelter. So these park shelters are rentable to the general public. They pay and reserve a rental, they pay a rental fee, they reserve that shelter. If they arrive to the park and there's an encampment under the shelter, who has rights to that shelter? So by adopting this code, it would give our enforcement the opportunity to say, you do need to move on. This is not your, this is not a proper location. Can we connect you to some resources so that you can find that proper location? So again, these are facilities that should remain accessible to the broader community, available for their intended use. And again, if we can find ways to create those connections, that was the purpose and the intent of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Jay, I got to apologize. I think I called you Steve. I was thinking of something else when I was talking.
That's okay. I actually, that's okay, Gary, because Steve that did sit here was quite the man. I would like to, at this time, I know there's a number of people who want to share some of their insight on this particular ordinance. So I'll make a motion to open the floor, but I would like to limit it to a three minutes and, you know, share your point, but please share the point that it's, let's say, new information that can help us in our deliberation. So I'll make that motion to open the floor.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the floor for a three minute per person.
Per person.
Talking, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, if anybody would like to speak on this issue, like to come to the table, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Samantha Musoul. I live at 1815 Cormier Road. I'm an Ashwabanon resident. It is actually a duplex neighborhood, so that's home to a lot of young working families like mine. I'm a mom. I also started Table of Plenty, which I think is one of, if not the only, source of free food in my neighborhood and probably in the village. Every week, I see people from right here in Ashwabanon who are trying their best, working full-time, raising kids, doing everything right, but still have to choose between food and rent. So when I hear about this proposal to make camping on public land illegal, I think about those families and about the people who come to my really free farm stand because they've already run out of options. So for some, public spaces are the only place left where they can exist safely without being pushed out or punished. I live nearby one of those encampments, and I bring food to those people pretty much daily with help from my community. This kind of ordinance doesn't make homelessness go away. It just makes it harder for people to live and survive. It hides the problem instead of helping fix it. So Ashwabanon prides itself on being a great place to live and raise a family, and I believe that should include every family. So even those who are struggling right now, instead of criminalizing poverty, we should be investing in solutions like affordable housing, better access to public transit. There is not a bus stop within one mile of where I live. Accessible shelters and community partnerships like Table of Plenty. I don't get any funding for what I do. It's completely free. I have a community garden. It's a $25 plat fee that my family pays for, for me. They sponsor it, so everything I grow is for free. So Table of Plenty lifts people up instead of, pushes them farther, farther down. It is not the police department's responsibility to handle houselessness and the struggles that come with that. It is a community responsibility. It's our responsibility. And Ashwabanon does not have enough resources. This ordinance, I think, should be denied right now until there are resources available to help. We can choose compassion over punishment, and we can do a lot better than this.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Date your name and address, please, for the record.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Crowell. My address is 509 Oaklawn Avenue, and I am an Ashwabanon Village resident. I am also a volunteer with Joshua. Joshua has been in the community 21 years, and we work with people that are in prison. My biggest concern is that they say that we want to encourage outreach efforts to connect individuals experiencing homelessness with shelter, housing, and other supportive services. A couple of things. There is no shelter for families to stay together here. Zero. They don't have any place to go. They want to stay together, they're staying in parks. Another thing is, if we meet these people where they're at, why can't we offer them information to where to get help? If you guys truly want to just, you know, hey, we just want to help you, offer the information. Give them a card that says where they can go. Maybe, I mean, offer something to give a ride someplace that they need to be. If you give these guys tickets, they're homeless, they're not going to be able to afford it. They're going to end up with a record. With a record and trying to get out and trying to get a job, you are in trouble. Very, very few places will hire you if you have a record. Very few places will give you a place to live if you have a record. So if you're going to give these homeless people tickets that they can't afford, they're going to end up in jail with a record, which is going to make it worse. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
My name is Grace Margaret. My address is 2209 Fox Heights Lane, and I am Ashwabanon resident. I would strongly urge you guys to deny this motion. A lot of what has been said already are things that I agree with, but I do want to emphasize that nobody is choosing to camp out in these public spaces. That is a last resort for many people. I am part of a grassroots organization that goes to parks and serves meals to people at these parks. And I can tell you that the people that are camping, that don't have a home, they know about these resources. They know about the shelters. They are using them as much as they can, but it's not always enough. I think if you guys really want to address this issue, and I do understand the intent behind it is not to criminalize homelessness, but that is what it is. That is what's going to happen. And if you really want to address these issues, we should focus more on providing support for the homeless people in our community instead of trying to get them out of public spaces. There's nowhere else for them to go at that point, if they're sleeping in the park or on the side of the street. That is their last resort, and we should be focusing on providing support instead of criminalizing that, so.
Thank you.
Josh Benty, 400 South Washington Street. I'm with the Greater Green Bay Blueprint to Prevent and End Homelessness. Thank you, Joel, Mary, Tom, for meeting me earlier this month. Thank you, Village Board, for hearing me today. I'm asking you to deny this ordinance as it's written. If there's amendments at the table, that would be something to consider. But the unintended consequences of this ordinance have well been discussed, but the negative effects of the vulnerable homeless population aren't going to be addressed by an ordinance. I would hope that we can come together collaboratively to approach this. In our meeting, we discussed the need for a regional response to the needs of those experiencing homelessness here in Ashwabanon. As a member of the region, Ashwabanon has the opportunity to begin leading the way to that collaborative regional response. It is not Ashwabanon's response to fix this broken system, but it is your responsibility to be at the table when it comes to addressing the complex needs of our homeless residents. Again, I ask you to deny this ordinance and work with the Blueprint to Prevent and End Homelessness, the Brown County Housing and Homeless Coalition, service providers, to working on alternatives to this proposed ordinances, so together, we can work to have a solution that is as regional and inclusive for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Hello. My name is Scott Dembski. I'm at 441 South Quincy Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I live like a block and halfway from St. John's Park in Green Bay for about a decade. That's where there's major homeless encampment in our county. Personally, I've experienced no negative effects from this. I feel that we should, I kind of oppose this resolution, and we should not just push people at the periphery of society even further out. I feel as cuts to human services at the federal level kick in in the coming years. We can expect the numbers of unhoused people to increase, including families with students. Could happen to me or you. A number of years ago, I saw in a St. John's homeless shelter newsletter, a guest wrote a piece about themselves being homeless. They were a graduate of one of the Ivy League schools, I think it was Yale, if I remember it, if I remember correctly. It could happen to anyone. Forcing unhoused people out of sight, presumably to other towns in our Brown County community in order of mind, does not really make the problem go away. So I saw a video on YouTube channel titled Second Thought. The video was titled How Finland Added Homelessness. They had the strategy of housing first. Giving people a baseline of shelter makes it that much easier to deal with other problems in their lives, such as maybe mental health issues or addictions. Of course, not everyone has these issues. There are many people with low-wage paying jobs that found themselves unable to pay ever increasing rents. Corporate and private equity buying up housing, including single-family homes, has seen as a major cause of housing cost spiking. Where I work in DePere, I've had a number of coworkers come to there, they're homeless. One person who lived in Shawno, but he, you know, him and his significant other broke up, and he had to, you know, he found himself homeless in Shawno. He was a veteran. The VA said that the best we can do is like bring you to Green Bay. They drove him to Green Bay. So even beyond Brown County, we end up being a place for people to come to. Basically, I know closing, saying that we all have a right to live on this earth. Where are people supposed to go if they, you know, can't go where there's just not someone's backyard? Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I don't want to address necessarily the homelessness issue here. Can you list off the things that would count as like an encampment? You said like tents, cooking utensils?
So within the code, how it's listed is to camp or camping would be defined as to set up or remain at a campsite, including the storage of personal belongings or camping materials, or take habitation in a single location on village property. Evidence of lodging may include, but not be limited to, the presence of camping materials such as tents, temporary shelters, tarps, umbrellas, bedrolls, mattresses, blankets, cooking utensils, clothing, and other personal belongings or vehicles used for sleeping or habitation.
Thank you. I think that actually kind of goes against even what was denied in the previous proposal because, say, I bring my nephews to the park and I set up a tent for them to get out of the sun, and I have a blanket and I'm cooking or having a picnic for them. According to that, that would be breaking the ordinance. So I think this ordinance definitely needs to be amended, and not even just for the homeless, but in general, it affects the whole population. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Wellhouse. I live at 2190 Center Street, Ashwabanon resident. I guess one of the things that really concerns me is that right now, we're in a time when we have a lot of economic issues going on in the nation in general. We have an increased concern with homelessness, with not just homelessness, but with finances and different things going on. There's, we're at a time when people are potentially losing jobs, benefits. I mean, we all know that benefits are about to go up here, the cost of them. We're paying more for groceries, healthcare, housing. We're going to see a lot of people that are going to be struggling more and potentially being put out in the streets. And where's the compassion for that? That includes, I mean, we're looking at veterans, people with disabilities, people who are having mental health crises because they're losing their lives. Some of them are losing their homes. Some of them are having families broken apart. And, you know, where's the empathy, the compassion, the community love for these people? And then let's look at mental health issues on another scale. I work in social services, and when people have mental health crises, do you know how hard it is to get them treatment? You go to the crisis center, you call the crisis center, and you try and get them admitted anywhere? Unless you are literally practically trying to kill someone or yourself, they're sending you home. And if you can't get a job and if you don't have the right resources, you want to talk resources, you could very well end up on the streets. And now let's say you have a diagnosis like schizophrenia or psychosis, and you're out on the streets, and now a police officer walks up to you. Do you think you're going to have a positive Do you think you're going to have a positive interaction with that police officer? Even if that police officer might be trying to help you? But let's not go on with that. Because what really we do need to do is we do need to try to find resources. But what kind of resources does Ashwabanon have? We have this food of plenty that one of our community members is doing. But what is the village doing? What can we do on a bigger scale? Why haven't we come together? Why haven't we tried to do something on a bigger scale for the people that need us? You know, we started as a grassroots community a long, 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 long time ago. And let's get back to that. You know, if the police officers, from what I read about this, they're looking at up to a $5,000 fine. So you take a person who has nothing but the clothes on her back, and you want to put an ordinance in place that's going to take their silverware and fine them up to $5,000?
I hate to stop you, Jennifer, but it's past the three minutes, and we did have a three minute. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Holly Bulenowakowski, and my address is 2215 Baston Street. I don't have a whole lot new to add into this, other than being of the perspective of an educator in this community and seeing how much our families are hurting currently. We are lacking resources, as Ben stated. We are lacking infrastructure to deal with the problems that we have. And I know that was mentioned that this is a proactive approach, but this feels very punitive. It feels like this is going to add into those problems that our families are already facing in our community. We recognize and understand that we want everyone to have access to parks. We want everyone to have access to public space. And that includes our friends in the margins who are having a hard time. We want them to have access as well. And when we put things like this in place, that creates barriers for people. I hope that as a community, we continue to come forward and think about actual proactive steps to help people in need and not just push this to the side and then ticket. We don't want to add more to our families that are going through a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anybody else like to speak about this subject?
So I'll spell my name. It's Joelln, J-O-E-L-N, last name L-A-L-K-O. I live at 2330 Kanter, right here in Ashwabanon. I'm just a concerned resident. I, I don't know much about homelessness itself. I don't know about all the resources out there. But I would challenge you to find out what resources there are for these people before even making a decision. Because if you talk to anybody who's worked with the homeless, resources are very hard to find. So I would just challenge you to do that before making a decision.
Thank you.
My name's Trudy Sterns, 3022 Angeline Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I'm old. You know what's coming. Your homelessness is going to start in 30 days. You're going to have people on the streets. I'm a landlord. I have to eat. I have a tenant that can't pay their bills. What should I do? Who am I? Who are you making our decisions? Go home and sleep tonight before you make any decisions. These people cannot fend for themselves. Sleep on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make any comments about this? Hearing none, I need a motion-
Make a motion to close the floor in a second.
Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, before we start deliberating this, I do have to say that, as Joel stated, this ordinance was never intended to punish anybody. And Josh, you know, when we had our meeting, we had that discussion. It is about safety and accessibility to public lands. And I know every one of these people on this board, I know them all very well. I've been here for 20 years. And a lot of, they have a lot of compassion. So don't, don't think that this ordinance lacks compassion from our board, because it doesn't. I know our officers. I've been here for 20 years. Our officers have compassion. So it is not intended to punish anybody. So I just wanted to make that statement.
I'd just like to say a few words, and Joel kind of hit this a little bit at the beginning with homelessness. It's not only a concern in Ashwabanon, it's a concern in all the adjacent communities. It's a concern in Northeast Wisconsin. It's a concern in the state of Wisconsin and the nation. And I believe what we need to do, and a lot of people said this here, we need to work together, actively work together before we even look at this ordinance. There's an awful lot of people in here that are willing to step up. They know organizations, they have information that can help us to help the concerns that we have in our community. We do not want to be punitive. We want to work together and make this not a problem that we're pushing to somebody else. Something that we're working with the community in the area and trying to help these people. So I would make a motion to deny this ordinance and have staff reach out to all the different organizations that are here. And if you have any that you haven't been mentioned tonight, you know, please let our staff know. So we can work together and try to get a really, it's a big issue, and try to get a solution that maybe can help the residents in Ashwabanon as well as in Northeast Wisconsin.
You know, I agree, it's a big issue. Everybody knows it. It's been around forever. The problem is we got 17,000 people to take care of in this community. And we've had five card carrying people over there. We've had seven people come up here and talk about the problem, and all of yous have a concern about it. How do you fix it? My wife and I sit and talk about it all the time. We don't even come up with an answer. We know some people that are homeless, and if they would do the right thing, they wouldn't be homeless. They'd have people to stay with, relation. But they won't do what they are told to do by the doctors. It's a drug problem. There's no answer to this. We have 17,000 people to worry about. And it just so happens, everybody in this room here is saying we have to be compassionate. We are compassionate, but we don't have the answers. The police officer over there, the chief, is out looking for answers. And they're still searching. So what is the real answer?
Well, Gary, I, I, I understand your concern-
Could I just really quickly interrupt, just for Robert's Rules of Order? I believe a motion was placed on the floor.
Yep.
And it didn't have a second yet, so it just- And then, then you can certainly debate the motion, but if you want to follow your normal rules of order-
I didn't realize that that was a motion. Okay, Trace-
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to deny.
And my point is, is, and I appreciate everything that so many of you are doing. Because yes, this problem is, is actually beyond our scope even. But it, it's becoming apparent to me that there's a lot more work that needs to be done. A lot more discussion. I want to give all the residents of Ashwabanon and anybody who enters Ashwabanon a safe and a, a great environment. I don't want a kid coming down a slide and running into somebody sleeping in a slide. I don't want that. Nobody wants that. But why did that situation happen? That's what we have to get to, is that solution. That's not going to happen with this village board. It needs to be, go beyond that. So I think probably putting this ordinance in effect right now is not helpful in any way. I think it can, it can maybe help our, our public safety do something. But I don't think our public safety has the tools to be able to fix it. So what I would be asking is for our staff to, to take this. And to be honest, this maybe is a good thing that this has happened. Because maybe some impetus can come out of here to actually start to get more things in motion to try to help. You know, in, in little ways. And I understand every one of you are doing little things and helping in little ways. And maybe we can make some of those actually grow. And I'd be asking staff and directing staff to start to hold some, some sessions, to bring some people in, to start to try to understand what, what the solutions are. The problems are very, very explicit. Everybody thinks understands the problems, but it can't be solved up here either. It has to be people from Green Bay that have to get involved. DePere have to get involved. Alloway have to get involved. Holbar. Everybody in this area, all in Brown County. And there are resources, but I'm not sure that there's, I understand there's a list of, of resources, but I don't know that there's truly been a great inventory done. I'm going to totally admit, I don't know enough about the subject, the topic. But I think there needs to be an inventory done to understand what are all the resources and why are these people where they are? And I get that there's mental health issues, there's financial issues, there's family issues. There's all kinds of things that make that happen. I just think we're a little premature here. We do want our other residents to have that safe place to be able to, also. And so do all of you. I get that. You know, you guys aren't saying, no, that kid shouldn't go down, he can't go down that slide because, no, that's not what you're saying. You're just saying they don't have someplace else to go right now. So that's the reason why I'll second the motion. And I think it's just premature at this point in time. I think we need to do more work on, on this. And it has to be work done at, at a more regional, at a more regional level and, and to make this actually be a solution. So those are my thoughts on it.
So Jay, what do we do in the meantime that the kid can't go down the slide or the shelter being used, want to be used by a family and we've got encampment there?
Well, in, in the meantime, what's happening is, is there are, you know, we still do have things that, you know, that Chief Rowland can do and it's people to try to get people connected with the right resources. We don't need an ordinance to make that happen. We don't need a rule to make that happen.
And I'll go back, kind of contradicting myself again, but we can create an ordinance, but we got so many ordinances on the book right now that we're not even policing them.
And I, then that's kind of what I'm saying too, Gary, is I don't know that putting an ordinance on the book is going to help it.
You know, and I, I'm going back to what I said. It's been a problem forever and there's, what are you going to do about it?
I know, and that's why it has to be a bigger thing-
All these experts out here that deal in that, and they don't have an answer for it.
Yeah, and it, and we all need to continue to work on it, but I don't know that putting an ordinance in is gonna, is gonna save that kid going down that slide. I think if we put this ordinance in, that kid's still going to go down the slide, and guess what? Still going to be sleeping there. Because we, we can't, you know, Chief can't have that many people out there patrolling every one of these parks to, to support that ordinance anyhow. So we're putting in an ordinance that, to be quite honest, we aren't going to be able to support it anyways.
You know, both of you guys are right. Our system's broken is the problem. There are a lot of other issues. You guys talk about all the good families and good people that are homeless and, you know, bad things do happen to good people unfortunately. But you're also forgetting there are bad people out there. I do own a lot of properties and I have kicked people out. What you're failing to realize is what about the guy that had, was selling so much heroin out of my building and destroyed it and cost me a ton of money and made it super unsafe? What about him? Because he was roaming the streets of Green Bay after he was evicted. What do we do about that? What do we do about, what do we do-
We don't have, we can't open the floor right now.
What do we do about the guy that gets placed off of assistance and unfortunately, you know, doesn't want to look for a job and, you know, he's pushed out to go somewhere? And then you find out that the FBI is looking at him for extremely bad crimes. There are really bad people, but what do you do? What, how do you differentiate between that? And that is where our system is broken. I agree with every single one of you. I actually do rent to people that have criminal records. I actually just took in a guy who has a pretty significant felony. He's a great guy. He's good, just got a bad break in life. There are people that do that that exist. We do need to have more of that, but where and to what cost and to what extent? It comes from a community. You're absolutely right, but th- these are way bigger issues. I see where everybody's coming from, you know, Gary, I, I agree with you. If my kid went down a slide and landed on a dirty heroin needle, I would be the first person to come unglued. So what do we do? How do we do this? But again, that's nothing we're going to solve up here, so I do agree. Putting this off for now, talking about it, I mean, there's, there's nothing we're going to do here today that can solve anything. But these are problems, and we do have a police force that has to deal with this, and we do need to be conscious of that as well. So, with that being said, that's all I have.
I agree with, with Chris just said. Before, he was going to say something and he, he kind of wrapped it pretty tight. What I was going to say, that's, I agree a lot of what you guys, when I came in here, I was, I'd never really make up my mind, but I was kind of leaning towards going with this proposal. And that's a tough thing to do, to get in front of an audience, really hard, and I appreciate the thing you guys did here. And, and we do have a lot of empathy up here, but that's a heck of a burden to put on us, like Chris just said, when there's the other side of it too. I, I'll vote not to go ahead with this because the timing's not right. There's issues out there that we can deal with in a different way and help that, the community. But like I said, there's the other side of it too. That's, that's a heck of a lot of pressure you're putting on. We got constituents, 17,000 people that we got to take care of that want to feel safe. So I'm just asking that you guys also look at our side of it too.
I have had a lot more people reach out to me than what's sitting here, how they want this homelessness to end because they don't feel safe. So finding a solution to some of this is definitely important. I mean, we are elected by the public. So doing something is going to be key, but what is that? I don't know. I do think we should have some discussions on this, but again, the way that this is now, I do agree that we should not move forward with it.
Yeah, and it's like Jay, or, God, sorry, my brain's not working tonight. Like Joel said, it's regional, so we need to reach out to the other communities as well. You know, we are right next door to Green Bay. Green Bay is the biggest city. We are right next to a big city where there's maybe a lot more homeless people there that are going to start moving out into the communities surrounding. So it's a regional problem, and we need to get all the communities involved as well as all the servicing organizations that are already out there doing these things. So we can't do it ourselves. We need help, and we need to step, step on and start working on it and working with others that can help us be successful. And it's a huge issue, Gary. I agree. It's a huge issue. It's been around forever. And we just need to work on it.
Well, I have to say one more thing. We don't want to have to close our parks down like Green Bay's doing. The kid's afraid to go in them.
Yep.
You know, they've even changed their ways of living. Now they make tents out of park benches. Throw a tarp over it and that's, becomes their home. We don't want to see that in our village. So we've got to, you know, I'm going back to say, we got to do something to, to protect our 17,000 people. Uh, so we've got to, you know, I'm going back to say, we got to do something to, to protect our 17,000 people. Like I said, nobody's got the answer for it.
Nope. And it's super difficult because you have to do something to help the people that want to be helped.
Exactly.
And create an ordinance to stop the people that are the nuisance. And that is the difficulty legality, the lea- the legality of how you do that is beyond any knowledge that I have, but.
And I'm also going to say that, I a hundred percent agree with what Chris is saying. I don't know that that definition is there. Cause what, to Chris's point, who, how do we sort out? Who are the ones that actually need the help? What kind of help do they need from the ones that, well, they don't really want to help themselves? They don't really want to, you know, and, and I think we have to figure that part out. Because there is a definite need, but yet there's also definite abuse. And that's what we, and I, I think collectively you guys are all in the same spot. We just need to sit down and be able to, um, discuss that, figure that out. What, what are those steps? What is that we have to go through? Um, that's why I just think this is, this is probably premature until some of those things happen.
All, all of these answers, um, that we're trying to find solutions. I don't know that we can legislate that from up here. I think like Tracy said, like Jay said, this has to come from a bigger group. So anyway, back to the motion. Um, there's a motion and a second to deny.
Could, could I just ask for just a couple of quick clarifications? So as part of the, the motion, there is a request to direct staff to do somewhat ambiguous thing. So, uh, and a motion to deny the ordinance is very clean, black and white, understood. A motion to direct staff to meet with people and talk with people, pretty ambiguous. So if I could suggest, um, and Josh is aware of this, the Brown County Housing and Homeless Coalition, there's a, a list of at least 26, 28 providers plus that are in the area. And, and if I could suggest that that motion be clarified to suggest that we reach out to Brown County, the blueprint. We could have them present information to the board. I know that there were a number of you that indicated that they would like to learn more information about the complexities and the regional impact of the issue. And we could have them come back to a future meeting and talk about the variety of things that they talk about on a monthly basis. Um, when they do point and time counts and they talk about shelter capacities and funding mechanisms. And, and there, it, it is so complex. If that could be the motion, I think that gives us a very clear, black and white directive versus this kind of talk to some people and, and figure out a solution, Joel.
Absolutely agree, Joel.
I don't know I'm going to get there.
That, that's unfair. Agreed.
Yeah. And, and I just want to add too, just full, for, for full context and, and disclosure. When staff create ordinances, oftentimes they're at the direction of a constituent, a request of a constituent, a request of the board. So when these ordinances are drafted, staff doesn't necessarily agree or disagree. Uh, me as a village manager, I take an ethical code of, uh, conduct, uh, code or, uh, uh, an oath. And basically that indicates my job is to carry out the directives that the board has placed forward. And oftentimes that is to create legislation proposals that regardless of if I agree with it or not, I still have to present to, to the board for that consideration. And that's ultimately what we have a lot of times is there's ordinances that I know full well that may be agreeable or disagreeable to the board and we have to produce that. And ultimately we have staff, we work with our attorneys to make sure that they, uh, to the best of our knowledge and ability are, are complimentary to constitutional law and that they're not discriminatory. And so ultimately that, that's our goal, right? So I don't want, there's been a lot of feedback in the public domain that, you know, who is, who's pushing this? It's not necessarily being pushed by anybody, but it's an effort to be responsive to the concerns that were presented to members of the board, to staff. And this is evidence to good governance and legislative process. You are able to deliberate on an issue, you are able to hear from constituents. And tonight you're going to make a decision that hopefully you're comfortable with and that the community is comfortable with. And that, that to me is good governance. And I think, I think regardless of whatever decision you make, you may agree with it or disagree with it. The process was in place to allow people to provide their input, their feedback. And ultimately for you to make a sound decision.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Joel.
Okay, so.
I agree. Staff has done as much as they can.
Okay.
But we got, we got to end this thing pretty soon, but you know, Joel, you're right. And we got to find the experts to get in here and teach us to come up with a solution. But I'll guarantee you will never come up with a solution.
So I will amend my motion to deny the ordinance and direct staff to work with Josh and bring the 27, 28 community or organizations together. So we can learn about it and I would welcome you to have staffs invited to the village board as well. Josh, I would have a question for you real quick. Do you think it would be beneficial to have other leaders from other communities partake as well and have one big one? Or do you think a separate one? Both? Okay. So my motion taking stuff out from Josh, but would be to, um, deny it and work with Josh to have a meeting, um, in the village of Ashwabanon.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to deny ordinance 010-3-25. And work with Josh, have staff work with Josh. Okay. Everybody understands that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 9D, consider discuss act on resolution R10-1-25 regarding salaries and compensation for elected officials. Village trustee. Joel.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. The resolution that's before you is a resolution that's presented each year in advance of the next election cycle. Under state law, it is required and municipal code that the village of Ashwabanon established salaries for its elected officials for the term of office that will be coming up, uh, in the next election cycle. Uh, for 2026, the seats, uh, the trustees in wards one, two, three, four, and five and six are up for election. Um, the resolution that is in your packet, the way it is currently written maintains the salary as it is today. If you elect to adopt the resolution, it will hold salaries consistent with today's rate. Uh, however, if you would like to amend the salary to increase the salary or decrease the salary for that matter, that is your prerogative and your discretion. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Any questions?
I will make the motion to act on resolution R10-1-25. Um, and to approve, uh, that resolution as it is currently written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R10-1-25. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9E, consider discuss act on resolution R10-2-25. An initial resolution regarding revenue bond financing for Cornerstone Community Center, Inc. project. Information with respect to the job impact of the project will be available at the time of consideration of the initial resolution.
Right. So we have before you, uh, Cornerstone Community Center right now is, is looking to expand into a fourth sheet of ice. It's a large project that they're working on. Uh, they came to the village, uh, looking for any assistance, uh, with some financing needs. They've been able to fundraise, uh, for most of the project costs, but they're, it's coming in phases. So this would help them have, uh, cover all their construction costs upfront. So what they're asking the village and what we worked with our bond council and, and also with our financial, RW Baird Financial Provider, is one of the best solutions we could offer is an industrial revenue bond. There's a zero liability to the village. It allows them to borrow and get state, um, tax exemption. So it lowers their costs. Again, no obligation by the village. We don't even take it on our books. We don't have any, if they default on it, we're not held accountable at any means. Uh, it's going, we're completely safe from that. Uh, the only thing they said is potentially reputational risk, but you partnered with a, with a bad construction project or something like that. We're not concerned about that. The community center, uh, Cornerstone has been very, very successful. Um, looking to add another sheet of ice, uh, to continue to grow their business. So what this resolution is actually doing is allowing them to proceed with the process to, to issue those bonds. They're not actually going to sell the bonds till, uh, either later this year or maybe into January. Uh, but this just is basically saying yes, as a village, we approve that you can go ahead with this process and go ahead and, and at a future date, issue those, those bonds.
This does not affect our bond.
Correct. Does, does it affect our debt capacity? Nothing.
Okay.
I'll make the, uh, motion to approve resolution R10-2-25.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution R10-2-25. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Other items, number 10A, consider discuss act on appeal of denied operator's license Matthew S. Plots. Chris.
So, um, Matthew Plots was denied due to non-compliance with guideline number three, selling alcohol to the underage and guideline number five, failure to truthfully and completely fill out the application. Um, I know he is in the audience and Chief, I don't know if you want to say any more than what I said.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to open the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. If you'd like to come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Matt Plots, 527 Cloverland, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54301.
Okay. So you would like us to reconsider the denial?
Yes. You know, I, I've been in the business for 25 years. I made one mistake. And I admitted the mistake and I've regretted it since then. I'm just trying to move on and get past it. I got a job now and we have policies in place for things like that. When they come up, we check their IDs, enter everything in, and I'm just trying to get back into the work and keep going, getting better.
Okay. So let me ask Chief, I have one question. This was a fairly recent charge, wasn't it?
That is correct. So, uh, the gentleman, unfortunately, this isn't something that he did at work that he sold alcohol. He actually had alcohol, was in a vehicle with underage people, provided them alcohol and then was cited. It was, he was cited by Brown County Sheriff's Department. So, um, unfortunately, I'm not sure the facts that he might say is happening, but this stems from again, an arrest by Brown County Sheriff's Department late at night where he had, he was with underage girls in a car with alcohol. That was the reason, of course, um, that we get through our background.
What was the date, Chief?
Um, the offense a date was 8/27 of 24. So just last year. So within the two years.
That's within, with it, within that two-year period, yeah.
That is correct.
That, that's one of the reasons we denied it at the Public Works of Protection. I'll, I'll, I'll move to deny the, uh, the request.
Second.
Okay. Can we have a motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. The floor is closed. Okay. We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. I'm sorry.
I think, I think so you understand, we kind of have this two-year period. So, you know, that, you know, you do have in the future that you can come back and reapply type of thing. And talk to Chris. She's got all the info on when you can and all that. She's the expert, so.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10B, consider discuss act on a class B beer, class B liquor license request for Boomerang Stadium Holdings LLC DBA, the baseball cages. Okay. Chris.
So, um, the baseball cages is requesting the class B beer, class B liquor license at 2343 Homeway. Public Works and Protection Committee recommended granting the class B beer and class C wine, so not the liquor. Uh, restricting the license to the lounge and conference catering, catering area. And I believe they're in the audience, if you have any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have questions, comments?
So, um, just a quick question on it. So are they okay with having just the class B beer and the C wine? Will that work for them rather than the B and the liquor? Cause that's what Public Works approved, correct?
Right.
Right. Did they have any issue with that type of license versus what they had applied for?
We didn't really ask them if they were okay with it because we were pretty, felt pretty strongly that we did not want to, we only have one liquor license left and we didn't want to award it to a, a place that is only going to have canned beverages, like they're not going to craft cocktails with actual bottles of booze and stuff. They're going to just have canned pre, pre-made cocktails.
That has liquor in it.
That have liquor in it, right.
Okay. They also restricted to a certain area, not the whole premise like they wanted.
Okay.
I think, um, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion to open the floor so that they could come forward and just kind of share how they're planning for this to work and how it would, uh, work with their facility.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. The floor is open. Please state your name and address for the record.
Brian Stenzel, uh, 2343 Homeway with the baseball cages. Uh, I'm the, uh, vice president of Boomerang Management and this is Jase Bowman. He'll be our GM of the facility. Uh, so to trustee Krieger's point, um, the, the plan, the way we'd like to run it is we would have, um, beer and the classy wine, uh, behind our front desk. Uh, that would be available for purchase. All the cages are behind, uh, chain link fence. So there's a, uh, the front desk area, there's a walkway that can bring you down to lounge or bring you down to the conference area. There will be some benches outside of that chain link fence. So our, our hope is to have this approval, uh, for all those public areas, but not inside the cages. Um, no different than say a cornerstone. You can buy beer and you can't get down on the ice. Um, that is our intention with it. Uh, we'll have special events, rentals and whatnot for the facility as well. Part of the facility opens up, uh, where the big area can be one big area or six cages. Um, we won't allow it in there either. Uh, anything inside of that chain link fence would be no alcohol. Um, but that, that's our, our hope for this license.
Okay. And the class C wine and beer would work for you guys?
Yes.
That would work.
I just want to clarify, I think that Cornerstone doesn't, they don't have a license to sell beer and wine. They, they, on occasion, they, they take out a temporary license for certain events, but.
Correct. But it's the same protocols under that temporary license. So they don't allow it down on the ice was my point. There's a, it's segregated from the action.
All I'm saying is they, they don't have a, a, what you're asking for is something that's more of a permanent, you know, everyday use, yeah. Which is, I, that's all. I just want to clarify.
I also, if I can also clarify, this is going off of, um, state statute that's an ex- exception. That you're considering it as a recreational facility. So if they plan on doing other things, you know, like, um, having other events there, you should take that into account, um, because then it's not a recreational facility. So just want you to keep that in mind.
All right. Um, Brian, anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, make the motion, close the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The floor is closed.
I, um, I had a great conversation with Brian. I also had a conversation with John. Being a, um, baseball person, as many of you know, um, for many years, stating my age again. Um, I, I just have a concern. I see the facility being used by a lot of little league teams, things like that. And I not, I wish I could say that every one of them coaches, and I've shared this with Brian, we had a great conversation. I wish I could say that every one of them coaches, and I've shared this with Brian, we had a great conversation. And I so much appreciate everything that Boomerang and the Rockers and all you guys have done for our community. Fantastic. I have leveraged and used your facility like crazy when I was coaching. But I still struggle because you're never going to be able to not have bad coaches that are going to go, well, you know, the kids are in a cage. How about you and me go and have a beer? I struggle with that. I just I have slept on this over and over again. And I just can't, I can't support it. I just cannot support it. It's just my baseball and me and everything. And I've seen bad coaches. You guys can't police bad coaches. I get that. It's not your fault. It's just my experiences. I don't like cracking the door and mixing alcohol with the youth sports. So that that's my two cents and I won't be able to support.
Chris, can you clarify a little bit more of what you said about the recreational use? I don't know if I really understood what you meant by that.
Sure. So under exceptions in Wisconsin State Statute one twenty-five point three two sub three M, that is because they are baseball cages and it's a separate business than selling alcohol. Like if you go get your hair done and they give you a glass of wine, they they shouldn't be doing that because it's a salon. They're not selling liquor. There's probably eight to ten exceptions in statute, like ax throwing is one of them, recreational bowling, you know, bowling. So that's what I mean by they would be allowed to as the baseball cages. But if they're going to do more things like concerts or they're going to rent out just the conference room and lounge, it's up to you guys to decide if you're still considering it as an exception to that statute.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
So I'll kick this forward. I'm going to make the motion to deny the class B beer, class B class B liquor license or class C wine license.
I'll second that and I just under discussion we had at our last park board meeting, the hockey facility had come to us for a license for them to sell beer at the facility. And what we did is we allowed it for one event to see how it went. And if it went well, then we would revisit. I I would understand that we cannot do this with this because this is a license that would be open for, we couldn't put a limit on it, like try it for two months and see how it goes. It would be a year.
They get it and then we would have no control over.
And then we would have to deny it or have a real a reason to pull it back.
Cornerstone has considered a picnic or temporary.
Yeah, the they they came to us, they wanted temporary license for a series of tournaments that were coming up, like four or five tournaments instead of, you know, just a permanent license. My question would be that now it was brought up a couple of times. There's a concern about what happens if they would have a do something else other than a recreation. Is there, where is that concern coming from?
The state statute?
No, no, I mean, what what where's the current concern as far as what their layout is, is there a concern they're going to do something else with it? Where's that coming from?
I believe that Public Works and Protection, they made a comment about doing other things. I don't know if that changed.
I mean, is that because of a layout of the facility or?
For for me, Chris, it's just the interactions, you know, of coaches and the possibility of them going and getting a beer when they got a team in there doing something. I know for a fact that they're having great conversations with Brian. You know, they're they're looking to try to also have the availability for, let's say, bunch of Saint Norbert's ball players come over, that they could have a beer and go hit in the cages. Or they want to have a special event in their conference room. Maybe they have a bachelor party or bachelorette party. That way they could come in and have that in their in their in their conference room and use the cages and kind of use the venue as as an event. I you heard where my concern is coming from. So that's what you're talking about with the special events and things like that.
But I think as far as those exceptions are concerned, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, in order for it to come out of that category, that exempt category, the primary purpose of the facility has to change. So long as the primary purpose is recreational, they continue to fall into that category that will allow the exception.
But we have no control over that. So once they get it, I'm just making them aware that that can happen. So once they get it, they could turn it into anything without having baseball cages.
But then wouldn't the village at that point, that would be a violation of the license condition, right? It would need to continue to be.
That would be up to you, the the village, to decide that if they want to do a quasi quasi judicial hearing to revoke it.
So I guess I think that we're saying the same thing differently. So long as the facility remains primarily recreational, unless we have reason to question that that's the case, these other special events wouldn't take away that licensing opportunity. That's my understanding.
They made the comment at Public Works and Protection about if there's an epic event, that they would use that also. So I don't know in what form that wasn't questioned. So I'm just telling you what I heard from the Department of Revenue because I question that.
Okay.
My concern is if we deny it, that you have like three different ax throwing places in Ashwabanon and they all have beer and and canned cocktails available or what available beer and wine, I guess it is. It seems unfair to me that they can do it and these guys can't.
Yeah, but it has to do with bringing, there's you you can't tell me that there isn't going to be a bunch of little league teams walking in there. There are going to be a bunch of teams walking in to do ax throwing.
I'll I'll on that point, Jay, I'll I'll and I brought this up at various, well, with the hockey group. And like you with baseball, you know, we grew up, my family grew up a lot with hockey and we traveled all over the Midwest and Canada whatnot and there were a lot of facilities with with Fubelum bars in there.
Agreed.
And 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 I've all through the years, my kids started playing hockey when they were five years old through college. I never saw an issue with the the parents have just too much invested in what's going on. They came in and made most, great majority of them didn't even bother to patronize though. I know where you're coming from.
I I in baseball, I have seen the opposite.
Okay.
I I again, it's my experience that's driving me here.
Yeah. I get it. Yeah, yeah.
So I I have to clarify something with Ashley. So what you're saying, Ashley, is that if their primary is recreational, it doesn't matter if they have something else in that building on a Thursday night in January.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay.
You know, you brought up alcohol in the ax throwing places. They just beer and wine, aren't they, Chris?
Right.
There's no alcohol in those places.
No, they're they have that exception also, which is just, well, technically, they could ask for it. So if you are capable of getting a class B beer, per state statute, you can apply for liquor.
You can apply for it, but we didn't.
Right. Well, they didn't ask either.
I don't think they asked for it, if I remember right.
They didn't.
It just caught me by surprise to have. I said, I don't think so.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to deny, correct? All those in favor of denying, say aye.
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 Aye. All those in favor of granting, say aye.
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 I I think you would do a motion opposed and then we would need a new motion in order to grant it. If that's the intention there. So the motion is to deny. Those in favor, those opposed. If that does not pass, then we would need a new motion.
Because we haven't defined which one we would pass.
Correct.
Right. So we 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 had the vote, let's do a voice vote on motion to deny. Okay.
Okay, so this is to deny.
To deny the class B beer, class C wine.
President Kardowski.
No, I don't want to deny. No. Trustee Paul. Deny. Trustee Atkinson.
Well, I now I'm confused.
I was going to say the same thing.
So it should, yes, just simply an aye or a nay?
Yes.
So the motion is to deny any license. Are you in favor of denying a license? Don't worry about what comes from that. Just a simple, yes, you're in favor of denying a license.
Oh, okay, understandable.
We'll start over.
Yep.
President Kardowski.
No, I'm not going to deny.
Trustee Paul. What'd you say? Okay. Trustee Atkinson.
No.
Trustee Zerbal.
No.
Trustee Service.
No.
Trustee Krieger.
Yes.
Trustee Flukie.
Yes.
So that is five to two. Okay, so that motion failed.
I would make a motion to approve the class B beer, class C wine for the baseball cages, restricted the license to the lounge and conference catering area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the class B beer, class C wine for Boomerang Stadium in the designated areas that they have proposed. Everybody understands that?
Okay.
And it might be redundant, but you do another roll call vote. Just we have a clear record.
Yes, roll call vote.
Can I just question real quick? Chris, you just said just the lounge area and like conference room. So that does not include walking around by the batting cages. Is that correct?
I don't know the layout.
Oh.
I'm just saying I don't want it down in the batting cages.
So they can walk along outside of the cages.
Like if I'm going to go watch my child be trained there, I can have a drink while I sit there.
Okay.
Yeah, the the layout, the two separate rooms are separated by a common area. So in order to go from one area to another, that common area will need to be connected
Yep.
on the premise map and description, but it would need to exclude based on that motion, not inside the cages.
Doesn't that fence take care of that?
Yeah.
I'll be taking those through the fence if somebody opens it. So, okay. It's a motion to approve the class B beer, class C wine. President Kardowski.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Service.
Yes.
Trustee Krieger.
No.
Trustee Flukie.
No.
Okay, that passes.
I will say the one thing that I don't like about doing just the beer, wine. It takes away the ability to sell the seltzers that are made with vodka. And I just, it has nothing to do with you guys. I just, I know that you would want to sell them, but it's really difficult for us because then you could have a full bar. We only have one of them licenses left and we would like to retain that for a more of a purposed facility. So that that's kind of why I did that, just so you're aware of it. And hopefully that works out for you guys and I think it's a great idea. And looking forward to going in there because I'm sure I'll be there.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Ten C, consider discuss act on water, sanitary sewer and stormwater rate increases. Mr. Rickert.
All right. I might tag team this a little bit with Greg, but I'll get it started here and if he needs to chime in, I'll definitely ask for his assistance. Anyways, back in twenty twenty-four, you guys may recall, the village, we contracted with Ruker Milkie to do some long range cash flow analysis. Kind of called it phase two of our capital improvement plan. With that, I looked at our capital improvement projects, so our upcoming projects. So whether it's doing work at the Babcock standpipe or doing some sort of large road construction project, culvert replacement, something like that. They looked at all those projects and then made sure that there was going to be adequate funding in the years forward. So for the next two years to ensure that our revenues align with our expenditures. With that, they did provide long range cash flow summaries. Those are attached in the agenda. I can get into the details of each one of them. I'm going to start off with water. Our water utility is regulated by the PSC, the Public Service Commission. We recently did a purchase water adjustment clause adjustment, which essentially was just a pass through of the increased rates that we're going to see or we are seeing from Green Bay Water. It's just passing on the increase that we're seeing from them. It's a direct one-to-one ratio. No really increases. Our users see increases, but there's no additional revenues that are above and beyond. It's just more of a one-to-one ratio pass through. I do recommend that we do a simplified rate case study here in this next year, so in twenty twenty-six, to take advantage of what is generally a easier process to adjust our rates to ensure that we're preparing for upcoming projects and then also taking care of projects that are currently on the books. So with that, we would work with the Public Service Commission, look to do a simplified rate adjustment. You guys are most familiar with the conventional rate adjustment, which is what was done in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, which is far more complex. They dig back into a lot of your bookwork. That wasn't something that was traditionally done here in the village, but it is something that the village did take a look at. So that's for the water utility. I don't know if there's any detailed questions about the water utility. If not, I can move on to the sanitary sewer.
So water, we're looking at three percent
Correct.
increase for twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
Twenty-six.
And that's basically pass through, right, Brian?
That that is not a pass through. So the pass through was done this year through our purchase water adjustment clause. So what that is in order to do to make sure that our our net change in position is, you know, expenditures and revenues are balancing.
Got you.
So we we, of course, our operations, they do increase, whether it's wages, whether it's just general operations for buying treatment, stuff like that. They they have the ability to make sure that, you know, we're making sure that our expenditures and revenues align with each other.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So you guys, jumping into sanitary sewer, you may be aware that we had our presentation here from New Waters, so Green Bay sanitary metro district. They did present, they're doing a lot of capital projects. You may have recalled, you saw that they were looking at a seven percent increase in their operations charges. If you tag on top of that, their capital charges, that's about a ten percent increase that ultimately gets passed through to us. Our sanitary utility does have a general operations budget of about eight million. Of that eight million, six point three of it is just treatment costs. So even though it it seems like a big dollar amount, being that eight million, six point three million of it is just for paying for treatment. So it's not even to have pay salaries, it's not to send our guys out to do any sort of repairs, televising, anything like that. With that, to make sure that we're staying fiscally responsible, I did see our long range cash flow for sanitary. It does recommend a nine percent. However, as we continue to look at our net change in position, you will notice going back all the way to twenty twenty, our expenditure is bigger than revenues. So essentially, we're kind of tapping into our savings account every year just to stay afloat, which is generally not very good practice. I want to advise, continue to do it. I know Greg can probably get into the weeds of this more if you guys have more detailed questions about that. If we want to get that flipped the other way, where our revenues and our expenditures are aligning with each other, we would have to look at about a twenty percent increase. That would include that we would have to have a public hearing. Our sanitary sewer utility is not regulated by the Public Service Commission. So there is less hoops to jump through, for lack of a better term, but it is something that we should consider. As we are looking forward to in twenty twenty-seven, you may recall, we're really going to get into heavy into our road reconstruct projects, which is really going to continue to to dive into those funds. However, we do have infrastructure that is nearing the end of its useful life. We want to make sure that we're staying responsible and getting ahead of those projects rather than waiting until there's failures.
Either Greg or Brian, the increase goes to nine percent for quite a few years and then it drops back to eight percent. And I noticed on the bottom, the cash versus the percentage of operation and maintenance is in the red for a while. So what you just said, basically, are we are going into our savings, basically, to keep up with that?
That that's correct. Yep. And the reason that's in the red is generally your percent cash on hand, you want that just a general industry standard is forty percent or more, your O and M. Well, when you drop below that forty percent, say something major happens, we won't have the cash on hand to take care of it. Well, when you drop below that 40%, say something major happens, we won't have the cash on hand to take care of it. Um, so they do kind of recommend in the utility that you have 40% uh, of your O and M uh, as cash on hand. It's just a general rule of thumb.
Yeah, and to, to piggyback off of what happened over the course of time, we had really high cash balances in our water and sewer utilities, so we didn't do a lot of rate changes. This was well known for 10, 15 years, every audit was to the point, we have the last debt service payment on our water utility next year. And we knew at that point we'd start some infrastructure improvements. So we, you know, kind of coming into approach and we had a, we had a plan this. We got to a point, we'd start doing some minor rate changes. Then the sewer capital plan kind of got thrown on us. And that has just, just hammered our cash because those costs came quickly and without a long-term plan. And they're pretty, they're pretty substantial as you know. So that's why you're seeing that. That's why when you said 20%, 20% would get us to basically even, if you will. So you can look at our, you know, the water side, it worked. Uh, I think it was like last year they came, they gave their plan. We made the changes that we needed to over the last couple of years. And if you look at our financials, um, that bleeding is almost to a point where it stopped. And now we're starting to build up our balances again. That cash balance came to a nice level where it needs to be. Uh, so that worked out okay. The sewer is, it really is the, the, the pass through cost to us that we're trying to absorb. It's not our operations. It's not our, our internal long-term planning for capital projects. It's really that, that, that came out of, not nowhere, but it really wasn't known to us the last 10 years.
Have we looked at for an average resident, what we're talking, an increase?
Uh, I have not, but that's something I can definitely work on.
Yeah, I would like to know before we say nay or yea here, well, okay, what are we talking? Are we talking that they're gonna be paying another, another $50 a quarter, another $10 a quarter, or another, you know, what, what, what are we looking at?
Yeah, Jay, I think what, what we wanted to do tonight is to present to you, uh, to the board kind of all three utilities, obviously New Water. If you recall, last year, we kind of did the same thing where in October, we had New Water come in. And at that time, Green Bay Water, which is our source supplier on the water side, also presented.
Also presented, right.
Because they were proposing a substantial increase. Let's introduce the topic. Let's reintroduce kind of our cash flow projections for the next 10 years. And then if it's agreeable, we can put that package together and then you can see kind of how that lays out to the average customer.
Okay.
And then that would come back for a future meeting. Kind of similar to some of the ordinances we've had where we kind of present the topic. Yeah, bring it, bring this back in more detail with that percentage and we'll, and we'll do that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but you know, like you pointed out, we hit them hard last year already. Bam, some rates, some uh, bills really went up. I'd like to know what are we, because if, if there's phone calls, it's gonna come because last year they did. And it's gonna come over this. So I'd like to, like to know what that is, but I get where you're coming from. So that's fine. So I'll make the motion to direct staff to prepare documents to increase water rates 3%. Sanitary sewer rates 9% and storm water rates 10%.
I'll second.
Wait, can you go through storm real quick?
I can.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to direct staff to do 3%, 9%, 10% and come back with the information. Any other comments?
I was wondering if Brian could go through storm real quick?
We have to finish that motion first.
Get the storm water yet.
Okay.
We'd have to finish the motion first, correct? No?
No.
This is part of discussion as part of that motion, so it's perfectly relevant.
All right, so uh, storm water utility, um, getting into uh, the weeds of that, the um, the cash reserve uh, or percentage of cash uh, as part of the O and M uh, in our sanitary, or sorry, in our storm water utility is far more healthy than our other two utilities. Um, however, um, we are starting to do projects now that are eating away at that cash reserve very quickly. Um, those being large culvert replacements, pond construction, um, things that historically haven't been done, um, because they didn't need to be. Um, but as we start looking at, you know, a project like uh, Glory Road culvert replacement, you're talking about $400,000. So um, with that, we have a considerable amount of projects like that coming. Along with that, we do have a road reconstruct projects that do have storm water, um, a storm water network under them. Uh, so with that, to ensure that um, things are keeping up with uh, our projects that are up, up in front of us, we are recommending that 10%. You'll see that is something that was also reflected um, in Rukert Milkie's long range cash flow, uh, was 10%. Um, there is a few years, uh, when you do those 10% increases where we do drop below that 40%. Um, however, it's because there are some road projects that do have a large storm water network that are very expensive to replace.
Okay. So we have a motion. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to accept the rate increases. They'll come back with the final numbers. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Ten D, Consider Discuss Act on Flashing Stop Signs at the Intersection of Morris Avenue and Ori Lane. Brian Rickert.
All right, so at the intersection of Morris Ave and Ori Lane, um, you may be familiar with that intersection. Um, essentially Morris Ave is a stop condition. Uh, it's a two-way stop condition intersection. Uh, Ori does have the through movement of traffic. Um, we have noticed over the course uh, of this year that there has been an uptick in accidents at that intersection. Um, if you do drive through that intersection, you'll find it very unique because it seems like if there is a challenge in seeing the stop sign or any sort of visibility, it'd be as you're going westbound. Um, however, uh, majority of the accidents are when vehicles eastbound. Um, the vehicles that are going eastbound, they are stopping, uh, well, hopefully they're stopping at Marley already. As they continue east, it's the next block, uh, Ori. Um, they are occasionally failing to stop. Um, at that intersection, we have placed flags um, on the stop signs. The stop sign posts do have high reflectivity, uh, red striping on them. The cost that you have in front of you is to install a flashing stop sign that's solar powered. You're probably very familiar with them. They're in various locations in the village, Ridge and Morris. Um, there's some at Shady and um, Cormier. Um, but ultimately it's to uh, install those flashing stop signs at the loc, that, those locations uh, to try to see if we can uh, stop these vehicles from either failing to stop or not seeing the cross traffic.
Brian, would you ever consider four-way at that intersection or doesn't it meet the criteria?
No, I, I don't think the criteria is, is there to, to merit that. And, and a lot of it too is, you know, we, not only do we look at, you know, traffic flow on, on the daily, we, we do also have to look at our special events and how that would impact traffic flow. Um, so there, there definitely is not a merit there for a four-way stop. Traffic volumes are not there.
Right, I know you've been doing what you can for what you got. Uh, I've been, I got some feedback from, from residents there and they're seeing a lot of people just running right through there. It really needs two things. It needs the flashing lights, uh, and it also needs some tree trimming to get some visibility in there so that they can see it. Uh, I travel that route somewhat and you'd see the trees first before, then the stoplight. Now, for some people, it's too late to stop, so uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we do install the uh, flashing lights, uh, or the flashing stop sign signals.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve and authorize the Director of Public Works to order and install flashing stop signs at the intersection of Morris Avenue and Ori Lane.
One question, uh, or did I misread it or misinterpreted? But since we put the flags up, I thought I had read that there were no incidents going through there.
That is correct. Yep. Whether or not the flags are the fix for the solution, they're, you know, the solution for the problem, we, we don't know that yet. Um, but we haven't had any reported accidents since then. Um, westbound, I, I would agree, Gary, that there definitely could be some canopy lifting in, in that area. Eastbound, which is, there, there is no tree canopy that's blocking any sort of visibility. When you go in westbound, you're coming over the crest of a hill down into a sag in the roadway. Um, that's where that stop sign is. So if you're, you know, if you aren't ready for that stop sign, I could see how it could sneak up on you based on the tree canopy.
We've had that same problem on uh, Marville and uh, Casner. Uh, actually, we had some rollovers there some years ago, but ever since they put up the flashing stop signs, it, they still bowl through there sometimes. I'll, I'll have to admit that. But that's when they're looking at their cell phones. That's more priority than looking at a stop sign.
And that's something that these flashing stop centers aren't gonna fix, so.
I guess I'll go back to if the flags are working, why are we jumping to the next thing? I, it's a minimal cost. I don't have a big problem with it, but I'm just curious why we're, if the flags are working, why are we jumping to the next thing?
Actually, the, uh, the flags look cute for a while, but let me tell you, they wear out fast and the lights don't.
Okay. Is that your experience? You seem to be a, but you
Yeah, yeah, the flags don't last. I mean, in the UV rays, they break down. If they make it a year, you're, you're doing pretty good.
Okay.
Um, the, the flashing stop signs, you probably got about three to five years. They need a battery replacement and then they're, they're good again. Um, they have been pretty, pretty maintenance free. Um, we do have them in various locations in the village and they, they work. Ultimately, I, I, you know, we definitely could hold off and continue to monitor, um, but I know it was brought
No, it's a minimal cost. I just had to ask the question, you know.
True.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the flashy blinky stop signs. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Ten E, Consider Discuss Act on Traffic Calming Options for Cormier Road. Joel.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Uh, this particular item was brought forward again from the last meeting primarily because staff was directed to produ, produce some additional data for the board's consideration. Um, Public Safety placed the dynamic speed message board on Cormier near Sha, Shady Lane for approximately a three-week period. Uh, as we talked about last, last month, we would place the dynamic message board in what is called stealth mode, which basically does not display to the motorists what their speed is, but it still collects the data. So they think it's turned off or it's broken. Uh, and then for week number two, we would turn on the display board, again, displaying to the motorists their traveling rate of speed. And then finally, we would leave it out there for an additional week, turn it back off onto stealth mode to see if there were any changing patterns. Uh, this is in, in um, core, uh, complement or in concert with a prior action of putting that dynamic message speed board out uh, several weeks ago and collecting similar data. And within the staff report, we've, we've basically summarized what that average speed is for each of the three-week periods. Uh, the posted speed limit in this area, I believe, is 30 miles per hour. Um, and so you can see the average rate of speed is, is within one to two miles an hour over the posted speed limit. So uh, all told, that is a, uh, actually a very favorable number. Uh, if your 85th percentile uh, is within that, that five to seven mile per hour range, you're, you're usually doing pretty good. And we're actually below that. So um, do we have incidences where individuals are traveling at a much greater rate of speed? Certainly, uh, but the vast majority of the traveling public is traveling within that, that margin, if you will, that, that, that plus five miles per hour or less. Uh, also included in the packet was a link to a variety of technical resources uh, Brian had provided for, for the board to consider. And so if you were to click that link, it would, given you a, a number of things from traffic circle, circles to speed tables to um, bump outs, things of that nature. Uh, at this point, I don't believe in, in our internal reviews of staff from Public Safety or Public Works that we're not recommending at this time, any structural or engineered changes. If the board would like to do so, we certainly can incorporate that into the budget. It wouldn't hurt, uh, certainly in, in reducing some of the concerns and it would certainly provide some additional calming. Um, but at this point, we're not identifying a true problem to solve.
Am I reading that graph right? When you click on the Cormier eastbound at Shady in stealth mode, that at 2,300 hours for that week, you have one person traveling at 96 to 100 miles an hour? And it slowly drops down into, I don't know, 46 to 50 miles an hour, there's roughly 600 people going.
I, I can explain that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, uh, there were some erroneous readings on here and, and as you look at that first graph, Chris, if you actually look at the second one,
Mm-hmm.
we start from 46, again, down to that 96. There was erroneous readings in there.
Okay.
Um, and it's a calibration issue for that machine is that's what the captain told me because I asked the exact same thing. Where are all the readings coming from? There's no way someone's driving 96 miles an hour without crashing. I don't care if it's a motorcycle or it's a vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
You can't drive that fast down that road. And then the other thing we look at is, okay, well, we do have police cars and fire trucks
Right.
rescue squads. There's no way they're gonna drive that fast. Um, and as an evac instructor, I can tell you that that road is not conducive to drive that fast. Are there some high speeds or higher speeds? Yes, but in my 30 years of working in the village, I don't think I've gone faster than 50 miles an hour just because it's not safe
Sure.
to go down that road. Um, again, but with that, so there was an issue there and I, I brought this to the captain and the captain did recalibrate it. And if you look at the next weeks, you'll see that they were actually corrected. Um, that the last week, unfortunately, we couldn't get the one direction because the battery for that unit um, died. Uh, that's what we're uh, believing that's happened because we had it up for three weeks. So yes, that first week, that's where he also wanted to make that mention of um, if you look at the, uh, the collection of speed, it was within our range and what we had for a, a ritter. So I would disagree, or not disagree, I would definitely take a, a point of looking at some of these speeds and realizing we're not going 76 to 80 miles an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it doesn't matter the time if you notice. And that's kind of how we realized there was certainly a big error here um, for that. And again, it's, it's technology. We can only be as good as what it's given us, but
Yep. So the westbound on week one is accurate then?
So the westbound is, that's correct. If you look at that, you're not seeing those um, blips on there that we do with eastbound.
No, just a couple of them.
Well, looking down the columns, uh, in the blue, if I'm reading this right, you're, for all these readings, it's only about 32.9 to, you got one here at 32.3, 32.2. It's not really fast, is it?
It, it's not. And again, um, you know, living in that area and then driving Cormier as much as I did when I was in the village, you, I can see where a speed picks up with a vehicle driving either east or but west.
Don't know.
But what's, what is good is that there are people that are actually complying to the speed. So you may be driving at a higher speed and then all of a sudden you need to slow down because that vehicle in front of you is only going 30, 35 miles an hour.
Okay.
Um, and, and so I think, but it's such a long stretch that, yes, there is a point, maybe you can pick up a speed. And then again, if you live in that area, you're, you're gonna see that, most, most definitely. But majority of the time, and I think that's exactly what this is showing us, is that they're not able to travel at a very fast speed very long.
Okay.
So they may, they may pick up a little bit, but um, they
You're gonna get the slow guy and try to get to slow you down right away. You know, uh,
That helps.
The question I have on the tool that you use for monitoring uh, the limits, speed limits, uh, is that just coming up with 30 miles, 32 miles an hour, 40 miles an hour? Does it have any flashing abilities to it?
It can and it'll, it'll flash. Um, there is a camera on there. Um, and, and I've used it before where we could try to get um, the license plate. But as it gets older and there's better technology out there, but um, we're using this right now just to let the people see that, hey, you might be going a little fast, slow down.
Well, some routes I've been traveling and I, I can't say in the village here, it, it isn't in the village. But if you're going at an excess of speed, all of a sudden a red light's flashing, a blue light's flashing. I mean, it really makes you, whoa.
Those are usually attached to the police cars, Gary.
No, no, you're, he, he, he's right, but
It, it almost makes you think, whoa, I'm gonna get a ticket out of this. But I mean, they really make you, the flashing of these colors, you know, and blue and red is natural, the uh,
Sure.
safety department's colors, but they really make you think to slow down, I'll tell you.
Absolutely. But then there's also some that drive that every day and go, let's see if we can get those.
Well, then
So with, those are the ones that we always like to pull over.
I, I think going over the uh, bridge in uh, DePur's got one of, if I remember it, but the one, as you're well aware of Door County, there's one that will, I was coming down a hill pretty damn fast. All of a sudden, those lights started flashing rather than coasting down. I hit the brakes.
That Corvette of yours, that's why.
Well, I can't help that. Well, I can't help that.
So Chief, within the state of Wisconsin, could you electronically issue a speeding ticket?
I, I, I would not like to entertain that, no.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought, just was, just wanted, just wanted that information, so.
And, and I, I'm not sure that, I'm sure Ashley could tell us, but I-
No.
That's, uh, yeah, acceptable.
You cannot, right?
No.
That's what I thought.
It's like red light running or anything like that.
Do some states do that though?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I thought I heard-
I thought so.
Yeah.
I think the thing with Cormier, um, like Tom said, it's nice that it's one lane each direction. So then you got the speed bump person that's going the speed limit and keeps everybody behind them. Um, but the perception is out there of the residents that people are speeding, which our data says, no, they're really going the speed limit. Um, and part of the reason is that road is so wide and open. And with some of the things that Brian attached, um, from the ITE.org, I'd ask you to look at that. There's some really good ideas that is something as simple as paint, even though Brian Oyster's paint's really expensive, um, that you could try to try to narrow it down and slow people down that much more and make it seem like people are going slower. Maybe they go slower. So, um, maybe that's something for us to look at and see if it's something in the future you wanna consider on Cormier. Cause it's the main east-west road in the village of Ashwaban and it's gonna, it's busy. And I wanna make it a place that the residents are comfortable with and they like and people aren't speeding on and that people can cross it safely too and move along it by foot and by bike and everything else, so.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of potential there with some of these things that Brian has put forth.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other discussion or we'll move on to F? Nope, no more discussion. Okay. 10F, consider discuss act on bid award for the Willard Storm Water Pond Construction Contract. Brian Rickert.
All right. Um, you are not stuck with Steve Burr. So, uh, anyways, I said I would cover this item for him. Uh, you guys may recall, two years ago, we had purchased property, um, right adjacent to the old Chapco headquarters. Uh, we purchased a two-acre parcel there. Uh, in our capital improvement plan for 2026 is for the construction of that re- regional stormwater facility. Um, we sent that project out to bid, uh, understanding that we know that it's a 2026 project. However, a project like this is a good project to do in the winter when contractors are slow. So we wanted to be kind of first to the game so contractors can fill out, um, their schedule in the winter. Uh, so we sent it out to bid. We did receive seven qualified bids. Uh, the bids ranged anywhere from six hundred and twenty-three thousand all the way up to seven hundred thousand. Um, with that, I am recommending that we do award the contract to River View Construction. Um, the work will not occur until next year on 2026. However, uh, I do recommend that we move forward. It is under budget. Um, and we do have two hundred thousand dollars worth of grant funding that we received for this project.
So Brian, does that mean that it, we will actually have to physically pay four hundred and twenty-three thousand?
Uh, so it's correct. Not, not necessarily because some of the grant funding is, was used for the purchase of the property.
Okay.
Um, I would double check with Steve on what that dollar amount is. I think it was eighty thousand that was used for the purchase of the property.
Okay.
With the remaining a hundred and twenty thousand going towards the construction costs.
Okay.
Brian, are you familiar with River View Construction and they're out of Wausau? Any concerns of them coming over?
Yeah, so River View Construction, um, they used to be RC Excavating. They're very com- they're a very familiar area here. They used to have an office in Swamaco. Um, they are based out of Wausau, um, but I am familiar with working with that entity.
I'll make the motion to award the, yeah, Willard Pond Construction Contract to River View Construction.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to award the Willard Pond Construction to River View Construction, Inc. in the amount of six hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty cents. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. 10G, consider discuss act on changes to Village Medical Dental Vision Insurance Plan for 2026. Joel.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I put at the DAS an updated sheet for your reference tonight. This updates, uh, some information that was in the agenda packet tonight. Uh, and the reason for that is what was presented in the packet was, was, what was presented to the Finance and Personnel Committee earlier in the month, and it was absent our final stop-loss numbers. We were able to acquire our final stop-loss insurance numbers this morning and be able to, uh, ultimately prepare the final plan rate sheet. From what was presented at the Finance and Personnel Committee to what we have presented today, we have some good news. Originally, we were planning a seven point three percent increase for medical, uh, benefits for both the village and the employees. And as a result of negotiating a favorable stop-loss insurance program, that increase, if we were to maintain our current plan design, would be at three point six percent. Um, and if we were to follow what was ultimately recommended at Finance and Personnel, that change would be two point eight percent. So at Finance and Personnel, in order to reduce the overall financial impact to both the employee and employer, our Health Committee had recommended a minor plan design change that would increase the deductible, out-of-pocket deductible for the individual by two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, that's on the backs, back page of, of the handout. And the family deductible would increase by five hundred dollars. So it'd go from two thousand to twenty-two fifty and from four thousand to forty-five hundred. And the out-of-pocket maximums would increase by three hundred and fifty dollar, or excuse me, two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, as well as five hundred dollars for the family plan. Um, we have had some significant changes over the last three years. And so the Health Committee, at that point, was not recommending any other substantial changes to the plan design other than the increase in the deductible and then the corresponding increase in the out-of-pocket maximum. Um, with the changes that were presented today, uh, in your packet had, had indicated the overall cost to the village for 2026 was originally a hundred and forty-three thousand, six eighty-eight. Uh, but if you were to use the changes to the deductible and that two point eight percent increase, the overall cost to the village should be fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. So a pretty substantial decrease as a result of that. Um, again, uh, the Finance and Personnel Committee was recommending option one, which would increase the deductible and out-of-pocket maximums. Um, but that again was based on what we presume to be worst-case scenario of a seven point three percent increase. Uh, so with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have. Um, and, uh, ultimately, we do need to make a decision on this because open enrollment starts in four days. So Megan has a lot of work to do to get everything ready for the employees to get final premium equivalents out.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the plan with the increases that are needed for these premiums.
At what rate? I would, I'd go for the three point six for fifty-five thousand, I feel.
That's, at, it, the-
Yeah, just, just to be clear, the, the fifty-five thousand dollar increase to the employer contribution would result in a change in the deductibles and the out-of-pocket maximums. So just for clarity, it's, you would be selecting option one, which again increases deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums to achieve that two point eight percent increase.
Just as he said.
So option one is what you are recommending, Joel?
They're, so all the employees' deductibles go up?
Correct. So that, option one would be consistent with the action that was taken at Finance and Personnel.
Mm-hmm.
And it matches that. It just, instead of a seven point three percent increase, it goes down to two point eight.
Yeah, which is great.
And, uh-
Yeah.
And the, uh, impact to the village then is at fifty, fifty-five? Okay, so you didn't calculate what it was at the, at the three point six?
Uh, the three point six percent, uh, would be, if you look at this, this side of the paper here on the top of the chart, it would be seventy-two thousand, one twenty-nine. And essentially what that does is it maintains our current plan design as it is today. And, um, the increase, when we, when we adjust deductibles, that decreases the overall liability both to the employee and the employer. And that's why that goes from two point eight to three point six or vice versa. Um, so if you wanna maintain the existing plan design as it is today, it, it's gonna be roughly, um, you know, eighteen thousand dollars, seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars.
We're talking if, to maintain the exact plan as today, we're tucking eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, seventeen thousand, five seventy-five to be exact.
Well, and the Healthcare Committee recommended, they were okay with option one when you guys sat around and talked about it. They were okay with the increase.
Yeah, but they didn't have, they didn't have this information either.
So, yeah, when we were initially met with the Health Committee, that was based on a worst-case scenario of about eleven, I think it was eleven point eight percent increase to the overall cost. To get it to that seven point three percent, you had to increase the deductibles and the out-of-pocket max. And so, yeah, to Jay's point, they, they're not aware of these revised numbers. Cause again, we got them at ten o'clock this morning to finalize for tonight's meeting.
For eighteen thousand dollars, guys, that's for the, keep everybody right where they're at, no increases. Um, in deductibles, everything basically stays the way it is for eighteen thousand dollars for every employee we have. It's pretty cheap.
Is that your motion?
Well, Gary started to make a motion.
Jay, Jay, let Jay have it. He, uh, he figured it out.
Yeah, I, I would make the motion that we, uh, continue with the current plan, which then, uh, the renewal adjustment is three point six percent, which then would be just an additional impact, uh, to the village of, uh, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Did I remember that run right, Joel?
That's, that, just for clarity, that's the difference between making the deductible changes.
Correct.
Um, so the total cost would be seventy-two thousand, one twenty-nine to the village.
Okay. As compared to?
To fifty-five thousand, forty-five.
So.
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, right.
Eighteen grand.
Yep. That's my motion. Leave the plan as is.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to leave the deductibles the way they are?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to leave the deductibles the way they are and out-of-pocket the way it is? Any other discussion? Does everybody understand this motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. 10H, consider discuss act on a Financial Management Plan Consulting Agreement. Greg Wenhols.
So what I'm proposing here is, um, to go into an agreement with RW Baird, who acts currently as our village debt service underwriter, to help put together a financial management, management plan. So this is something that's been on my radar, on my department's radar in our stra- in the strategic plan. And what the financial management plan does is it kind of takes all of our financial data information and condenses it down into a, a document to help with our long-term capital planning, more or less. And, and to some extent, operational. Kind of view it as, you know, Park and Rec has a comp plan. Uh, we have a comp plan for the village. Uh, everybody has it. This is kind of like the financial department's comp plan, if you will. So some of the key pieces with here would be, you know, it gives you kind of your current financial position. It takes debt, uh, your bond rating analysis. It compares your bond rating analysis and debt to other like communities or areas. Uh, reviews policies, then looks at property tax, um, some of those areas, the impacts of our capital improvement plans. It'll take the CIP, introduce that. It'll take our kind of history of our, our general operating budget and projections out there. And it looks at, um, some other, um, key points. It'll, it'll look at the utilities, all the stuff we just talked about. It'll bring that all into the mix. Uh, it looks at our TIF districts and how they're performing and how, you know, what is our long-range plan? When are they closing? The impacts of closing. It kind of brings all that data and information together and it kind of creates a different financial plan going forward. And these would be things that we would use for some of our, um, long-term planning. Specifically, on my mind, what happened is I was, uh, Baird had a, had a seminar I was at in the city of Oak Creek, was talking through their financial management plan. Oak Creek is where IKEA is. They're doing a lot of great things down there. And I talked to their, their finance director and he said, but this document that Baird helped me put together was, was so critical in everything we've done in, in their community, cause it really helps explain the story financially and how we can approach, uh, all these projects. So when we look at some facility studies that we're doing, some of these big, uh, projects down the road that we've got, and this would be a key, I think, document and plan to help in that. Um, it's been very difficult for me to get to this. Um, time-wise, it, it's, it's quite time-consuming to create. So what we, what would happen is Baird would help create it in year one and then they would maintain it on an annual basis as long as we need it. He said, some people pick it up. They do it themselves. Once they have the structure in place, they give you the documents. They give you the, the spreadsheets, if you will, that they use and help you with that process. Um, so to fund this, um, it's not budgeted. Uh, the United Service Agreement Fund will have a little extra money. Um, they, we were able to receive a little bit more revenue this year uh, from the agreement than what we budgeted. That's all based on, uh, state municipal payment. That's how we, we base our, our, uh, funding with the United funds. So I would, and we've had some savings, a little bit, uh, in IT and other areas that we could, could use some money there. That would be, it's a ten thousand dollar sticker price for year one to get it set up and, and, and set up. And then after that, it's five thousand dollars a year, which I do have into my operating budget in the 2026 budget. I have that in there already, uh, if this were to be approved. So I think it's a, a critical tool. It's something that, it's been on my radar. It's been on the radar to get done. Um, but I think with all that we have, we've talked about some major projects potentially in the village. I think this would be a, a critical piece of, of information to have available to, to the board and to other committees in, in the decision-making process.
Knowing the status of our TID districts and that, and Erin, I'm kind of talking to you too. Since obviously we're going to be looking to probably create, uh, a different TID district going forward, do you see this being a great tool to understand how to create that district? Its boundaries and what could be included in projects and that?
I think it helps more on the, the project end of things, uh, especially in terms of cash flow. Uh, typically in the first, you know, five to 10 years of TID, uh, you're typically working from a deficit, especially since we do a lot of redevelopment. So our base increment starts up here. You basically do demo, property acquisition, brings your base value down. So your first five to 10 years, you're working at the decrement. So you work up to get out of that into the, back into the black. And at the end, hopefully, you know, it should break even or, or be net positive. Uh, the financial plan like this would certainly help us forecast that. And, you know, how aggressive we need to be in terms of, uh, either project recruitment or project development.
Okay. Cause I look at this guy, it says, we need, look at how we've leveraged the TID districts to do everything that we've done. If this is a tool that helps us, how do we create the new TID districts and everything? I love everything else that's on here. I know it's, it's other, a lot of great stuff. But to me, that's the number one impact because that's the way we're doing so much of our development and how we're bringing things in. It, it, it's a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, I would agree.
And I, and our TID, um, our, our next steps with the next TID district are gonna be, have to be viewed a little bit differently than we've done in the past. We closed out a massive TID too. We had nothing. So we, we started from zero. We've got TID five, which has a lot of value, which is open. That's, we don't have twelve percent anymore. It's all eaten up. So we're gonna have to approach our next districts in much smaller chunks and we can't, can't just have half the village be in the district anymore. Um, cause valuations will, will grow.
What about the railroad tracks?
Yes, you can connect, yeah.
Actually fix them. Is that the shooty rule?
There's different ways to connect, yeah.
Just, just checking. Uh, I'm, I'm moved to approve the Financial Management Plan Consulting Agreement with Robert W. Baird for the period of October twenty-eighth, twenty, twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six at a development and implementation cost of ten thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-five and annual update and maintenance cost of five thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-six.
I will second.
Um, I just have a question quick. Um, does the plan look ten years out, five years out? Is it just a short term, like a one-year, two-year plan? Cause if you have to have them back every year to look at it for us?
No, I, I think it, it kind of does all three. So you're gonna have your, your long-term, ten-year, kind of a vision, right? I can't tell you what our operating budget is gonna be in ten years.
Right.
You have a vision. The five-year, a little more condensed, a little more control over it. Um, making some pretty good projections at that point. And then if there are needs to do a shorter term, then you have it available. But it also allows you to, to react to things that are unexpected. And, and I think, you know, the goal would be that I take this over and I think part of the next agenda item will help understand- And I think, you know, the goal would be that I'd take this over, and I think part of the next agenda item will help understand that that would take this over. I don't foresee in five years, have an agreement with them at that point. I should have this. Sometimes it's just, and that's what I talked to that other finance director about. I said, yeah, I've been wanting to do this. He goes, I was the same way. You just sit there spinning your wheels. How do I start this? How do I get this going? You've got experts in place that help you design this, and then you run with it on your own. And you use them as a resource potentially, and maybe in three, four years, you might have to pull them back in to kind of redirect it. If something major is happening, like you're going to create a new TID, you need some assistance. But you can also integrate, you know, we use Ellers and associates with TIF. So, maybe they would then see this plan and use it. Okay, I see what you're doing, and it'll help them as we're building a district or doing some work within it. So, it can involve other parties as well, but it's similar to a comp plan. You pull it out. Okay, what did we say? All right, make these adjustments year over year.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial management plan consulting agreement with Robert W. Baird. Any other comments, concerns, thoughts? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten I, consider discuss act on an ERP software system replacement for finance, payroll, and human resources.
Thank you. That would ERP?
ERP. ERP. We have ERP. We have GERP.
Yeah, it's a, it's.
You just crushed me, Mary. I worked in that industry for years. You just crushed me.
It's an industry term for a new finance system, okay? But it covers more than that. So, yeah, so what I've got here is, and I recognize this is a big ask. Current, our current systems right now that we use for basically running the department, so all of our payroll, our AP, our accounts receivable, billing, cash collection, other things, budgeting, it's a big component. We're using right now three systems, and then I always say four because I use Excel quite extensively for so much, especially budgeting and reporting. It's very clunky. What we have today, it's working. It's very clunky, but I have an excellent staff who spend a lot of time and hours mechanically making things work. And so, what, in short, what that does is that their time and energy is focused on, I don't want to say putting out fires, but trying to create solutions instead of using their brains to do more analytical work and be out working with staff. So, our systems right now, there's many issues that we have. About six, seven years ago, we went with a system called Civic Systems. We, I hate to say it, we kind of went the cheaper route at the time and thought, well, we can make this work. And it was working and getting along. And then payroll, we had a different payroll system, which we have today now as well. They don't communicate. They don't talk. You have to import data into the other one. And if a user, let's say Brian, wants to know why his overtime budget's high, he's got to log into the other system to try to get who it was, get through their reporting systems, and then he has to go back to the other system to see the financials. They just don't talk. So, those are some of the issues. Dolly is here. She would be more than happy to probably give you the long list of issues with payroll that she's constantly trying to fix. The system's called iSolved. I joke with her all the time. We should change it to call it WeSolved because most of the time when she's on support, she's telling them how it works, and she's not even getting the answers she's looking for. From an HR perspective, we really have nothing. iSolved has HR components, but they're just really not user-friendly. They're not able to help HR, Megan and HR, to kind of tell our story of our employees. So, there's a lot of added work behind the scenes, a lot of extra work done in Excel and other systems to help support the systems we have. Even iSolved in itself, or excuse me, Civic, our financial system, you do some things in their legacy system. You do some things on their web-based product. And it seems like the more they go to their web-based product, the worse it becomes. It's just so disjointed. Budgeting, for example, I have over 300 spreadsheets that I use to create the budget book. The new system that I propose, you do all the work within that, and when you set up your system, you just push a button and it's printing the system for you, or the budget book for you. So, I listed out a lot of other things. We just started fire inspection billing. We have one employee that has to manually enter over a thousand invoice because it won't do in file upload. It's insane. I offered to help. She's always, no, if you help, then it won't print. I'm like, what are you talking about? These are just the things we're running into. So, you think about all those hours and the time. I believe this was brought forward in September. I wasn't here, and Sherry was here, and then the question was posed, or, you know, what does this save? That's always the hard question. What are we really saving? How do we save? We feel that comfortably, conservatively, somewhere between a third and a half of an FTE in our department alone in savings, which would allow us to do other things like do a financial management plan and work towards those types of things. Work in more detail with the utilities on maybe we can do the rate studies ourselves and not contract that out. So, because Green Bay Water right now helps us a lot. When we do water studies, they'll do it for us. So, it's those types of things that you're going to get value-added service internally, and so, that's what we're doing. So, we brought in, over the course of a few months, we brought in about five or six different vendors. We reviewed all their products. And what we got was really our solution is, or answer is to go Tyler Technologies that can do everything, do payroll and all the HR payroll components. There's one piece that they don't do, and that is really our onboarding, our hiring onboarding, which in many ways is still kind of its separate little niche. Tyler Technologies is a huge company. They were very open and honest and said, you know what? That's not something we do because NeoGov is the expert at it. And they have, Tyler has the resources to try to tackle that, but they said, it's not worth our time. They're great. We partner with them. It works really well. We integrate everything in. And so, that would be kind of the solution. It's two vendors, but it's really just for one real specific purpose. Tyler Technologies does everything else. Are there other vendors that we could potentially go with, but then we'd have a separate payroll again? And, you know, or one little piece of it just didn't fit. As a team, we all reviewed everything. We all agreed that Tyler was number one at everything, not as a whole, but every component, the reporting side, the AP side, the AR side. So, cost-wise, from an annual basis, it actually would come in and be cheaper than what we're paying today with all the other vendors. The issue is there's always a one-time cost. You've got your implementation, training, and all that conversion time and fees. It's a significant cost. I recognize that. It's going to be about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars total cost. It pays for, like I said, all the training, all the time and energy setting everything up, converting. Other options, like I said, there were, there was one other option that would have been a little bit cheaper, but again, it's two different systems. And just kind of like, we all talked, we're like, well, yeah, that could probably work. And then you're like, okay, is it even, I pose a question, is it even worth in doing that? It's like, well, it would be better, but it's a concern that, well, remember this issue and that issue. So, we just feel like that's kind of where I was the last time we did this, and I was willing to try something different. And here we are again saying, and back then, the recommendation would have been Tyler, six or seven years ago. So, we're right back to where we started. As far as how that would be funded, we would use excess general funds. We didn't spend, a lot of that money was used towards the draft, where we would get some money back from the draft that we didn't expect. And we still have some excess funds. If you recall, in past years, we'll push that to another fund and use it for some other purpose down the road. There would still be other excess funds available that we could use for other purposes that would come to the board later in the year or in January after audit. But that would be how we would fund those one-time fees. We'd be looking to potentially, our goal would be either April or May first implementation. It takes, you know, it takes four to six months to get everything up and running. So, I would recommend a five-year contract with Tyler and to cover all these services.
So, the onboarding, Greg, is basically you onboard it, then you'll have all your HR stuff. But the only connection we don't have is then you need to put it in for payroll, correct?
For NeoGov would flow into, Megan and I worked with NeoGov and I got Tyler, and it would flow into Tyler, so it would be like, don't.
Okay, so they do have, they do have an open link to be able to do that. So, even though they're too separate, it's just it wasn't in NeoGov to do that, to do all the HR stuff that you need for all of the reporting and that, correct?
Right.
Gotcha. Okay.
What are the current operating costs for what you guys are running now?
So, if we didn't do anything, if we went to this, let's take out the one-time cost. That's a big number. Next year's cost for this system would be roughly ninety-six thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Our current system as set up would be about a hundred thousand dollars.
So, it's four grand less.
Yes, but it's significantly improved over what we have today. I, so.
Yeah, I was just curious. You said it was, would save you money. I was just curious what type of savings.
Right, it's not huge.
Take to recoup that.
You're not going to recoup that.
No, you're not.
But the, but the key, and I asked Sherry at the last meeting, that thirty percent is the key, the time savings of everybody. You spending all the time with support, trying to make things work and that, you can actually be doing payroll and actually can free things up. And where we talk about all this wanting to be lean, this is a tool to help us continue to be lean.
Well, when you started your conversation, Greg, you said, our systems work. Well, I saw Sherry sitting in her office physically typing one thousand invoices. And then she had to print them all out and then mail them out. That is just ridiculous in this day and age. So, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Their AR system doesn't support importing batch files.
Right, so, anyway. Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
One quick question for Megan. So, the onboarding and the HR part of this, what does it benefit you or what are the things that'll benefit you in what you do?
Sure, so NeoGov is going to be the recruitment piece. So, when you're looking to apply, and then once you're hired, that onboarding piece. A lot of the programs we saw, and even with iSolved, the onboarding piece, I would say, out of every two candidates we onboard, at least one of them has to call us because they can't successfully get on-boarded. Something is wrong with the system. And I would say that's true. Once they start as an employee, iSolved has continuously rolled out a new self-service platform. The challenge is, is it looks really great. None of the features actually work. So, if you ever sit in onboarding with me, I actually have to show three different features or three different pages of what it may look like when you log in and then show them how to get out of all of that and get to the page that will actually work. And so, obviously, that's not a good look on the first day when we're talking to our employees about how they sign up for benefits. And even further on for benefit purposes, it's not intuitive for the employee. So, it's a lot of me providing step-by-step instructions via email or scheduling appointments for something they really should be able to do on their own and have a good flow.
So, this one will allow that, make it a lot easier, look more professional and?
Correct. So, as we look at open enrollment and we talk about spreadsheets, I too, to make sure we are reconciling our open enrollment, I sit with four spreadsheets across, and I have to manually confirm that everyone has enrolled with this new software. It will tell me. I will be able to see who's actually logged in, who's done it, who's completed it.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to approve the contracts with Tyler Technologies and NeoGov for the period of January one, twenty twenty-six to December thirty-one, twenty thirty at a one-time cost of two hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents and an annual operating cost of ninety-six thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contracts with Tyler Technologies and NeoGov for the periods that Jay just said.
One other quick question. So, annually, will that price go up or is that a given that it'll be the ninety-six for the life of that contract? Because I didn't look specifically at the contract for that.
Sorry, that is, that is the, there's components of that that stay the same and components that would have a minor price increase. That's the cost. Right now, we're dealing with a five percent increase on our systems. It's not that high. There are components that stay the same, and there's a few that don't. I apologize. I don't have those in front of me.
So, it will go up a little bit each year potentially?
Most, yeah, yeah.
Okay, motion and a second. Everybody understand? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten J, consider discuss act on request to approve replacement of the 2017 Tahoe Chief 390 this calendar year 2025 instead of 2027. Chief?
Yes, thank you. We're at the end, right? So, let's go quick. We have a 2017 Tahoe. It was a former supervisor vehicle. That vehicle was used, obviously, in police patrol, again, for the supervisor. So, normally, our squad cars can maybe last three years, a little bit more if we try to take as good care of them as we possibly can. But again, we're starting, stopping, driving fast, getting to the scenes, and so on. This vehicle was moved on to the Chief 390, one of the Chief 390 vehicles. And it's used to take from their personal home, like in the middle of the night. Right now, for instance, there could be a call that would come in to Pier, Ledgeview, Lawrence, you name it, that they would respond to as the Chief 390 for the village of Ashwabanon, as well as any type of fire in the village of Ashwabanon, they would also then respond to. Again, it's that Chief 390. That's their incident commander for that. This vehicle has gone through an engine, a rebuilt transmission, and currently is basically running on seven of eight cylinders. Digest a little bit with that. We weren't planning on trying to replace this until 2027, but this vehicle right now has no four-wheel drive. It is basically almost dead in the water. I don't want that vehicle on the road anymore. Unfortunately, we have to use it. That's what we have. We have money in the 2025 budget to get a used vehicle this year, not a brand-new one, but a used one. And we found one, and we're looking for a motion today that we could approve to have and to purchase that vehicle just because this vehicle is not going to last through the winter, and it shouldn't be on the road this winter. Again, because of the roads that we drive and where we have to drive to, it's unsafe. I wouldn't allow a person to drive their own personal vehicle, I think, the way this vehicle is. I just don't want my deputy chief or our commander or any one of our officers in that vehicle anymore either. So, that's why we are asking if we can get this vehicle and a new vehicle that we're looking for. And that's what you'll see, that Tahoe, that 2025 Chevy Tahoe from Dorsh Ford. That's a price that we, again, have excess funds in the 2025 budget to put towards this.
If you don't mind, I'll, we talked about this. They're actually going to use, they have money in the United Service Fund that they use for variety of capital needs. And they are, they went back, put pen to paper and scaled back on a few of those areas, like fire hose replacement, radios, things like that. And they went through and said, hey, we're doing okay. We don't want to eliminate these from a budget, but we're doing okay here. Take a little bit from here, take a little bit from here to able to fund this. So, it really doesn't affect the general fund at all. It's all housed within the United Service Agreement for their work. So, they were able to go through that and find the funds that they need. They said, hey, we're looking at what's the highest priority right now? This car is more important or more of a priority right now than some of these other projects. Not that they're not important, but just this is that big of a deal. That's why we wanted to use these funds.
Is this fund going to hurt anything on future payment, future vehicles being purchased?
No, so this was slated, I think, for 2027, so it'll just come off the 2027 capital. It's not going to impact any other vehicle purchases.
It won't hurt that at all. Okay. I'm assuming it's a low-mileage vehicle?
It is, yes. I think sixteen thousand miles is all that's on this.
Well in warranty range then. All right, I'll move to approve the purchase of a used 2025 Chevrolet Tahoe in twenty, twenty-five is proposed to the 2027.
And I'll second it as long as the chief takes it with him. The old one with him, yeah.
The used one?
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a 2025 used Tahoe and. So, everybody understands the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Hundred and seventy thousand miles is pretty impressive on a vehicle like that, considering your idle time and everything else. That's probably eleven thousand engine hours and the equivalency of almost four hundred thousand miles, so.
That's why I think you should take it.
That, I agree.
No, I have to say, today I was in Doug's office, our commander Doug McDonough, and his equipment's all in his office. And I said, Doug, what are you doing with all your equipment? Well, his car was broke, so we had to take his equipment out. Well, his car was broke, so we had to take his equipment out because he needed it in case he had to go to a fire as Chief three ninety. So, anyway, I digress, sorry. Okay, are there any items for next agenda? If you have any, please contact staff. Uh, we're going to convene into closed session during the meeting, the village board of the village of Ashwabhanan may convene into closed session pursuant to A and B as listed in the agenda. Roll call, or, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Go on closed session?
Second.
First and a second to go into closed session, roll call. Yes.
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 Can't hear. Think they're out. Yes.